Thank you.
Weeks ago on a guy getting on the used to play.
Lyle.
Yeah, I had no idea.
Yeah, sorry. I was just saying, there's gotta be.
Really? Is it really the class three or something later?
Yeah.
Class three A's.
We're good. You'll have to tell him, I left my cellphone, I left my cellphone home, so if we have a problem, he'll have to text you. Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to welcome you out to our city council meeting this evening. We appreciate all of you in attendance. To get started with our meeting, we'll have an opening that will be provided by Council, by Councilmember Chris Snell, after which Boy Scout and Cub Scouts from Troop and PAC 854 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our kind Heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads before Thee this evening and express the gratitude that we feel for the privileges and the blessings we have for living in a free country and living in a wonderful community filled with amazing people and wonderful volunteers. We are grateful for all those who labor so hard to keep our community safe, to keep our homes safe and secure, as well as our community clean and fun. Heavenly Father, we pray that as we discuss the business this before the council tonight, that we will be inspired in ways that we can discuss in civil manner and in a polite tones, that we may strive to do those things that will be pleasing unto Thee and that will be for the betterment of this community. We love Thee and we say these things in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please rise? Please follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Snell and Scouts from Troop 854 for being here with us today. Before we get started on our agenda, we'll have brief introductions. My name is Steve Hyatt, I serve as the Mayor of Caysville City.
Jake Garn, Caysville City Council.
Dave Adams, Caysville City Council.
Susan Lee, City Council.
Chris Snell, City Council.
Larry Page, City Council.
John Thacker, City Manager.
Dean Story, Finance Director.
Lyle Gibson, Zoning Administrator.
Andy Thompson, Engineer.
Thank you very much. We do have, we do not have agendas available on the wall over here to your, to your left, but we can, we will get a copy of an agenda and post it there on the wall. We would like to point out for any of you that may not be aware, Linda Ross, our city recorder of 33 years, has retired and has, has decided to move on to greener pastures, literally because she's moving to St. George, but, well, maybe not greener, I guess, this time of year perhaps, but, but we wish her well and there's some agendas for you. We do have agendas available on the wall over here to the left, if you're more than welcome to grab one and check off as we, as we move down the list, but we'll miss Linda, she has been a great, great asset to the community. I often refer to her as our city's Wonder Woman, as she has saved, does a lot of things that I think even now we're realizing, oh yeah, Linda did that, oh yeah, Linda did that, oh yeah, Linda did that, and we've had a few of those already tonight in the short time we've been here, so we wish you, wish Linda well. The next item on the agenda, before we get to the next item on the agenda, I just want to recognize the scouts that we have here. I had a conversation with a mayor in a neighboring community and I said, "Do you get scouts that come to your meeting?" He says, "Yeah, in weeks we'll have a couple that come," and maybe all the scouts could just stand up for us. That is a lot of scouts and pretty darn impressive, so we just want to tell you scouts, we're proud of you for taking the time to be here, we're proud of you for being involved in the community. The road of being a scout and the road to becoming an Eagle, I think, is one of the very best things you can do at your age, so keep up the good work and thank you very much for being here. You're an impressive sight and you are one of the things that is wonderful and great about our community, so thank you. Let's give these scouts a round of applause for being here too. Thank you. You may be seated. The next item on our agenda is Volunteer of the Month recognition. We'll turn the time over to Councilmember Chris Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll call you down, Council. Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be here with you tonight and it is my pleasure to once again, this is one of my favorite things to be able to do, to be able to honor those individuals each month, Caysville City Parks and Rec nominates and honors someone who's done volunteer work within the community. Many who are here tonight, scouts and whatnot, we do applaud you being here, but we also applaud your leaders who are here with you, who bring you to these events and who take you to your various activities. Volunteerism is what really makes our community tick. All the different activities that we engage in throughout the year couldn't be done unless volunteers and people who were actually willing to step up and, and sacrifice their time and their energy to make the activities happen. And there is no end of the list of people who are volunteers and who could be honored, but we get to choose one or two individuals each month. This month, it's my distinct pleasure to be able to honor Nanette and Cory Louder. It's wonderful to have them here tonight. They moved to Caysville in 2005 from Boise. They fell in love with the city at first sight and jumped right into volunteer service, noting the best gifts can be found in serving others. Their Caysville City service began in 2007 and each consecutive year with many events, including the Caysville Fruit Heights Idol Contest, the Fourth of July Celebration, the Miss Caysville Fruit Heights Pageant, the Cold Cones and Cool Cars Event, the Veterans' Day Luncheon Program, the Christmas Tree Lighting and Electric Parade, and the Family New Year's Eve Celebration. So there are a number of people who volunteer at one or maybe two of those events throughout the year, but the Louders have actually done them all, and they've probably been doing them all ever since one of those events has started. So it's a significant contribution of their time and effort that they have made over the years. Both have also served on the Board of Directors for their Neighborhood Homeowners Association for many years. Along with several church assignments, Nanette also volunteers at the Bishop Storehouse here in town, as well as at the Bountiful Temple. Cory also volunteers with her by default because when you get one, you get them both. They both love to work their large garden in the summer, which is wonderful, and they love canning the end result of that. They also love to travel, but it's always good to get home, isn't it? They are blessed to be the proud parents of three great and grown children, Zachary with his wife Jamie, Brandon and Lindsay, who are often accomplices in most of their volunteer activities. So please join me in thanking and in welcoming the Louders. Please come up. We have to honor them, a plaque with their names on it, and we also have a little token of our appreciation, a gift, a gift card for a night out together, so, thank you. We'll take some pictures over here and then we'll give them another round of applause when we're done. One more round of applause.
Before Cory and Nanette go, we'll just say that there's not very many civic events that we have in the community that they're, that they're not part of. They, they are, take the lead on, on several things, but even when they're not in the lead role, they still show up to help, so we really, really appreciate the huge asset you are to the community, we recognize your efforts, and it's a great privilege to honor you tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give them another round of applause.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Snell. Next item on our agenda is Call to the Public. This is the time in our city council meeting when we turn the time to any of you that are in attendance that would like to address the city council. We do have a few items listed on tonight's agenda that will be discussed, none of which have a public hearing associated with them, so if you would like to speak to the city council regarding one of tonight's agenda items, this would be your opportunity to do so. We do ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes. Our old city recorder would keep track of time. I'm not sure Dean's prepared, prepared to do that. And sometimes I will too, but I left my cellphone home, so we'll just do our best to keep track and, and we'll now turn open Call to the Public.
My name is Christopher Layton. I've been a resident of Caysville for nearly 15 years. In that time, our family has only known the playground equipment that is currently installed at the Gailey Park. Over the past couple of years, our family has noticed that some of the playground equipment was beginning to break. Caysville Parks and Recreation was not replacing the equipment, which led me to ask Vance Garfield why the equipment was not being replaced. He informed me that the Gailey Park playground was on schedule to be replaced soon. In fact, this playground equipment is already two years beyond what is recommended by the manufacturer for safety. At that time, I asked him when the time came to replace the equipment if I could possibly be part of a committee to pick the new equipment. I explained to him that I have a son who has special needs and really wanted to provide input so that the new playground would be a place he could play, have fun and be safe. Last year Vance told me that the monies had been set aside for, for the Parks and Recreation Department to move forward with plans for the construction of the new playground. I, along with the great committee, have met multiple times together to make decisions regarding what we would like to see in our community playground at Gailey Park. The equipment that has been picked will provide a place not only for my son to play, have fun and be safe, but will provide that for any child, teen or adult to do the same. In a few minutes, Cole Stevens is going to formally present to you the plans we have decided upon. We feel this playground is unique. Caysville doesn't have another park in its city with equipment like this park will have. We are very excited about this new playground and we are confident that the citizens of Caysville will have similar feelings. In fact, most likely, some of your children and grandchildren will utilize this new playground as well. I am asking for the city council to vote yes tonight to the spending of the money that has already been allocated toward the final purchase and construction of the playground at Gailey Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chloe Thompson and I've lived in Caysville for 50 years. And 10 of those years in West Caysville and the other, the other on Larkin Lane in Caysville, very near Gailey Park. I knew Louise and Harold, who gave that property for the park. And this year will be its 40th anniversary for Gailey Park, and as, as Chris said, it has been many years since it's been changed, the playground equipment, and I have talked to Vance, and in fact, I think he ran every time I came near him. When is Gailey Park going to have its new playground equipment put together? And I have loved Caysville and its wonderful parks. I don't think there's a city that has more beautiful parks thanks to this, these two guys here and their crew. It's wonderful and I applaud them. Parks make a big statement about the citizens and about the city, and ours makes a wonderful positive statement. I do believe that if you let a park go down in one part, it will cause a different element to come in that you don't want. And Gailey Park, this is a need, not a want. This is really a need, and so I applaud what the committee has done and what these guys have done, especially in working with the committee, and I love what they've come up with, and so I ask the city council to please approve this and let us move with it and, and make it what that Gailey Park can be with this wonderful playground equipment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tammy Worston. Thank you, Mayor and council members, for letting me stalk you. I'm the pickleball stalker of the city. I just wanted to thank you for your positive responses in coming to learn pickleball, looking forward to teaching you and so you can see some of the vision that I have for wanting pickleball courts in Caysville. Right now, the closest public pickleball courts, courts that we have are in Bountiful, and then there's some in Ogden, and it is such a growing sport that we need to consider having some courts in, in Caysville. Get my glasses on here. Pickleball is multi-generational, it's just so fun that we can play with our kids. I've been in tournaments with, with my sons and I'm teaching my grandchildren to play now, and it's just such a fun sport that just really attracts people of all ages. Even though the national champion is a 20-year-old athlete, it really targets adults and seniors especially because we're empty nesters and we actually have the time now that we can play, so I would love to see a minimum of eight pickleball courts in Caysville if we could, and if we have eight courts, we could actually house some tournaments here and bring in people from communities all around the state, and that will help our economic development. Every time we go to pickleball tournaments, we eat out and, and sometimes we stay in hotels depending on where we are, so I just want you to be aware of that. Let's see here. Of all the parks that we have around, I love to see parks used for soccer and football and baseball and lacrosse, and it is so awesome to be able to have these things for our youth to do to keep them busy, but I also think that as we as adults or taxpayers, that I would like to see us maybe put some activity like this in a park for, for the, the adults and the seniors to be able to keep active and, and to be able to do things like that too, so I hope that you'll consider that. I would even love to see it, instead of waiting for Pioneer Park, I would even love to see you consider putting it in Barnes Park. I think there's some areas on the north side of Barnes Park that aren't being used very, very much, and I just hope that in the future that you might keep that in mind as a, as a place to consider putting those courts, and I think we've got parking already, and so I promise you, there are a lot of pickleball players in Caysville and Fruit Heights, and when the time comes, I will call them all to action and we'll all be here with our paddles and, and put our good word in, so anyway, thank you for, for your attention.
Thank you, Tammy.
My name is Jared Layton. I am from, I am a member of Troop 367, sponsored by the Gailey Park Ward. I too am, am coming to ask you for the city council to approve spending the money to construct a new playground at Gailey Park. As part of doing my Eagle Scout service project, I have asked the Parks and Recreation Department for permission to help them install woodchips at the playground. They gave me permission and I have got all my other signatures I need for me to count. This has my service project. My service project is the last thing I will need to get my Eagle Scout. My plan is to work with Cole Stevens to know when the woodchips need to be spread, then I will ask people that live near me to come and help me spread out all the woodchips. I have heard that is going to be about 300 yards of woodchips. I am excited to get a new playground and, and even more excited to be, to be able to help my, to help save the city money by doing my Eagle Scout service project for them. All we need now is to get each of you to say yes tonight to spending the money for this new playground. Please say yes so that we, we can have a new playground. Thank you.
Way to go, Jared. Thanks, Jared.
Hi there, excuse me, my name is Gary Rigby and I'm also in favor of the Gailey Park playground. But in, in addition to that, I'll be trying to do this very quickly. When I appeared before the city council in November, I objected to the approval of Hill's Farm Phase Three based on the lot sizes. They were half the size that was required, no buffer, there was no buffering for large animals, a difference in land use, a violation of State LUDMA Act intended to protect property values and property use, and finally, the use of my neighbor's property in the density calculation in the subdivision he has no part of, and additional seven lots were allowed directly behind me because of that. My objections and recommendations were politely listened to, but the plan was approved as is. Destination Homes did agree to put 20-foot more between the fence, it was 50 and they moved it to 35. I appreciate all 20 feet, but I didn't, but it did not change the fact that my property was being ruined by having a wall of four homes directly behind me, no buffering for large animals, associated with safety concerns as well, no privacy, and my property value, both monetarily and aesthetically, were being, excuse me, drastically impacted. I'd decided to do a little bit more research. Everything I had read confirmed what I had thought. Caysville was intended to be, excuse me, primarily, primarily low density, especially in West Caysville with a maximum two homes per acre. All of West Caysville was zoned R20 or larger. Standard zoning requirements were rigid, precise, variances to zoning could only be approved based on specific land uniquenesses and not by economics. All these things supported my objections and recommendations. Since Hill Farm is a P U D, P R U D, I read that section with great interest. My first question was why an open space P R U D was even considered versus standard zoning? This was to my knowledge the first of its kind in size, scope in West Caysville, and it appeared contrary to historical development in West Caysville and contrary to the general plan. The Caysville P R U D definition indicates its purpose is to provide, and I quote, "Flexibility in development specifically to preserve open space, conservation areas, be sensitive to wetlands, steep slopes and unique vegetation, and to assure greater compatibility of new construction to the existing construction in the neighborhood." And to quote, "The Hill Farms, none of these uniquenesses, it does not blend into the existing neighborhoods based on home type and lot size, and it radically changes West Caysville from rural low density to urban high density, fundamentally changing West Caysville." Why was this area allowed to fall under a P R U D? By doing so, you open the door to diminutive lot sizes, which opens the door for the developer to make up the difference by using land they do not own that is already developed. Hills and Ferber's property were included in this case, strictly for economic purposes to increase density, and that's the only reason. This is the, this is in total disharmony with the surrounding property that was developed under standard zoning requirements. Additionally, the most egregious is the misuse of the language "some additional density along a major street." My initial reaction was that it meant what it says, lots that face the street. Somehow that was interpreted much differently by the city and the developer. Zoning was changed to R14 within the subdivision, not even on the major street. Because of a string of loopholes, we now have R14 in West Caysville with lots as small as 5,000 and lots as small as 10,000 in R120. These loopholes allowed in Hills Farms created the following. Any undeveloped land in West Caysville can now be approved as a P R U D since the definition is not being followed, creating a disharmony with standard zoning that all of, all the rest of us had to comply with when we built. The new development can't be any lot size because we can include our neighbor's property, already developed property in the density calculation, as long as we have it under a P R U designation. The general plan in West Caysville requiring a maximum of no more than two homes per acre is no longer enforceable. We now allow R14 inside any subdivision that has a road connecting to Flint, Second North, Angel or Sunset, and I think every subdivision in West Caysville falls into that category. These executive decisions by the city circumventing standard zoning allow the developer to put approximately 50 more homes than standard zoning would have allowed, and I want to know why. My immediate concern is to mitigate the lack of buffering behind my own house, which is still a real issue. Thank you.
My name is Brandon Porter and I want to speak briefly to two points. First, I've had the privilege of being part of the Citizens Committee for the Gailey Park Playground. Park Playground Equipment. And I want to commend the process. Cole has been wonderful to work with, and it's been a great opportunity for us to be able to contribute our perspective as residents surrounding that playground, contribute our understanding of the needs of those who will have primary use for the playground. And Cole has done a fantastic job of facilitating our involvement, ensuring our opinions were heard, and allowing us access and involvement with playground equipment providers. It's been a great experience and perhaps something that could be considered to be repeated in the future with other opportunities with playground equipment replacement. And second, to just speak to the encouragement for voting yes to the approval of the funds for the replacement of the playground equipment. I was born and raised in Ogden, and I only share that with you for this reason. When I told some colleagues a few years back that I was moving to Kaysville, one of them said to me, oh, I told him where, he said, oh, you're moving to downtown Kaysville. And my stomach sunk because my association with downtown was downtown Ogden. And for a very long time, downtown Ogden was not a place my parents would let me go by myself.
Tell us how you really feel.
Yeah. I'm happy now, having seen what Ogden has done to its downtown area. But there's a lesson learned actually from what Ogden has done. An investment in that area has increased the marketability and the attractiveness of that area. It's drawn people. And to invest in the replacement of playground equipment at Gailey Park just shows that the city is invested in the entire city in improving the appeal and the attractiveness of any park that you might encounter in the city. Gailey Park is not the most visible park in the city. And as a new resident to that area, I was shocked come spring and fall to see how packed that park gets with football practices and then on Saturdays with soccer games. That park is well-used and that equipment is well-loved, and it will continue to be well-loved. People will love it even more when they show up and see new playground equipment there provided for their use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brighton Walker. I've been a Kaysville resident for five years, and I was also on the committee to plan for Gailey Park. That seems to be a big theme tonight. But I just wanted to make mention that, like Brandon said, being part of a committee to help plan a community park that's right near my house was a wonderful experience. It was fun to be part of being able to decide what my kids, I have four little kids and the neighboring kids, I'd enjoy playing on. That was a really great experience. I'm grateful that I was able to help pick out what Cole will propose to you guys, and I hope you guys will approve it. I also wanted to say that I helped bring a bunch of people to a city council a couple of years ago for tennis courts in the city, and they were placed in Gailey Park. They have been awesome, and they are very well-used. There's people on and off of them all the time. I look out my back window and see them, so I'm always kind of checking them out. And I hope that in the future, you guys will consider putting other courts in the city. I think they would be well-used seeing how much the tennis players are getting on these, possibly maybe at Pioneer Park when they're, I read in the newspaper you guys are considering, you know, starting that up if you can get the funds. And I hope maybe in the initial plans, you guys will consider putting that as a possibility right from the get-go rather than having to bring a whole bunch of tennis players later and voting for that. So anyway, I am for the proposal that they're going to put in for Gailey Park, and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
You guys don't know me, but I'm Dave Davies, and I live in West Kaysville. I've addressed this group before, and I wanted to just, I had a couple of things I wanted, very important, I want to talk about. The first question is, what is the purpose for this three minutes? I get the impression that it's, you know, we can say what we want to and finished. Nothing happens. No actions taken. We know everything off. Maybe if, maybe there's some action taken. I don't know whether I've ever had any influence on anything, anybody's thoughts or not. I've spoken a few times, and I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about the fact that we don't have a question-answer situation where we can deal with, you know, you guys sit there and you soak it all in and you may reject everything. They say, well, will that guy hurry and finish so that I can, so we get on with what's important? I have a few things specifically that I had in mind. You know, ultimately, of course, there's a ballot box, and we can all go vote. And you know, I know the most uninformed voter in the city, in the whole city, their vote counts just as much as the most informed vote in the city by Margaret Bruff or mine. And it, you know, it may count and it may not. Now, you're elected, and so you've already got your part. Now, let me get some specific questions. What is the area redevelopment all about? It's kind of a secret government. Nobody knows about it. They just take over major parts of the city and do important things. But the people don't know what it's about. They don't know when it happened. They don't know when they meet. They don't know who's on it. They don't know who makes the decisions. Am I right? I don't know who's got to respond, but I'm sure I'm right. Majority of the city don't even know what it's all about. In my opinion, it's a way to slide around, to have some way to spend money so that you can do it without having to have it go on announcement where it's asked for and we can talk about it. Okay? The questions are, what's it done for us in the past? What developments have we had that have come through area redevelopment? And I have a better question than that. When did they start paying taxes? After all, it costs quite a bit of money to do the infrastructure for Smiths. And I realize that they're an important group and they, you know, all of a sudden, we decided that we were going to have, that we were going to pick winners and losers. Bowman's and Fresh Market are going to be the losers. All of us know that. This city can't handle all three of them. So you've already made that decision, and it looks like it's working really fine because the West Ogden now has their own thing. Okay? I think it's kind of against the whole policy of the United States to pick winners and losers. It's not, it's a violation of the whole concept of equality. Lady Justice stands there with a blindfold on for a purpose. The blindfold is so that you can't decide who's rich and who's poor and who should have this and who should have that when it comes to government. Isn't that right? Okay, well, you know, I'm an old schoolteacher, so I wait for a response, but you don't have to respond if you don't have to, if you want to. By the way, who said we even have to have a city manager system? Now, we're making some changes. It seems to me that there ought to be some questions about that system. I have the impression that the city council members in the past, in the recent past, have not even, have not had a major part in what goes on in the area in which they are responsible for. And I think you know exactly what I'm talking about. The whole thing is really about, can we have some questions and answers? Can we ever do that? Is that something that could go on your agenda and you could discuss it?
Sounds like a great idea.
Well, I'd second that motion. No. Thank you, David. I hope that that's considerable. Something is here so that people can stand up and can hear the question, can hear the responses, and deal with it from there. Now, I know there's got to be limits on that. I know you have things to do and you have business that you already have planned. But I think the most important, the most important person here is John Q. Public. And they ought to come in. Then they will come with questions. If they're going to get some answers, they'll come with some questions. Okay, well, I appreciate your time. Thank you for your attention. I'm going to give all of it a gold star this time and an A for giving me at least a chance to say what I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gregory Frank. Mr. Davies has inspired me. I wasn't going to do this. There's one big weakness that all of us have. Last time we met, David Adams kind of showed a different side of a particular thing that we were talking about pre-trimming that needed to be analyzed or scrutinized. The biggest weakness we have, all of us, is that over time, we get in a mental rut. And there's nothing lazy about it. It just happens. We develop ways of thinking and we feel comfortable around that. I think it's important that we change something in this city government that doesn't exist anyplace else, and that's this idea of dialogue. And Mr. Davies just alluded to that, that the three minutes is really not productive. It's good, I guess, to vent, but to communicate, there should be a dialogue. There should be time set aside for citizens to be able to meet with the city council and talk about the issues and see if anything can be done or if anything should be done about various ideas. The new sitting council has the same, going to have the same problem as those in the old city council. They're going to have their ideas, and they're going to succumb to this myopic way of looking at things. And that's not a problem. It's not, it's not bad. It's just the way things are. I'm going to really encourage in the next few years, the city council creates and thinks about ideas to bring about dialogue so that we can talk and we can help each other. It's not an attack to be critiqued. I was working on a PhD once, and papers I handed in were slaughtered, and it made me mad. But you know what? It was good because it made me a better thinker and a better writer and be able to articulate more and better. So critique is good, and I hope because we now have a very diverse set of ideas here on the council, and if we bring together with that the dialogue from the citizenry, then things can be improved so that everyone says that it's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Hi, my name is Amy Henderson. I've lived in Kaysville for 12 years. I have six children, and we live by Gailey Park. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I think the scout program has it right. The last time I was here for a Kaysville meeting, my son was working on his citizenship in the community merit badge, and we followed the protocol that if you have an issue with the city, you find who's responsible and talk to them, which we did. We talked to Vance, and then he put his item on the agenda, and we were able to have a dialogue. And things went well, and he had a positive experience. So that was great. Several of us are here with the committee. I don't know if the committee wants to stand or wave because we actually have more than are probably going to stand up. But we do appreciate the opportunity to work towards the park and have enjoyed the process. And lastly, in addition to this, I'd like to thank all of you for being willing to serve because I know that it's not easy and it takes a lot of your time, and we appreciate the things that you do for our city. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other items for Call to the Public? Seeing none, we will close Call to the Public. We appreciate all the comments that have been shared. If any of the city council members would like to address or comment on any of the items that were discussed in Call to the Public, you're welcome to do that now if you'd like.
I think it's pretty cool, some of the stuff that was brought up. And Mayor, thanks for the, you know, throwing a bone to all of us to talk about it in response to these guys. That's cool. The feedback that the last two gentlemen gave, I think that's good feedback. I can recall standing at that podium years ago, you know, and sometimes you do feel like you're up at your rammy umptum and you're not sure how you're being received. So I think it's a great idea. I don't know. I know there's a gentleman in the back there who would have an answer to this question on legality, and maybe he can help out with that too as time goes on. Or perhaps more seasoned individuals up here know a lot more than I do about it, but I'd support it. I think it's cool, you know, and, you know, I appreciate the courage of people to get up here. I know that Mr. Rigby getting up, there's a lot of heart in that of what's going on there, and I completely understand that man. And I think as a tribe, we need to strive to come together and do something that brings win-win to everyone in that scenario and in all scenarios. And the last thing I'll say is, where's Christopher Layton? Is Jared your son?
Yes.
Do you guys go back to Christopher Layton himself?
Yes.
You have to with that name.
This is our city.
That's my wife's grandpa. That's my wife's great-great-grandpa, so you're probably a relative to my wife. But I randomly picked up another Christopher Layton in the canyon just south of St. George. His car was broke down, but anyway, I seem to run into you guys all over the place.
There's a lot of us.
But way to go Scouts and way to go the committee who put together this playground thing. I'm sure we'll talk about that again in a minute here, but pretty cool.
I am maybe the more seasoned person on the council that Dave's referring to.
I agree.
But, you know, and some will say maybe that means I'm overcooked, but...
No comment. Hey, I wasn't playing.
No, I know. I know you're not. It's important to acknowledge that anyone who has a concern about anything can contact the mayor and get on an agenda item on a city council. So anybody who wants to have dialogue, and this probably isn't well-understood, in order for us to have actionable something to be done, that has to be noticed. There are, you know, and we can get our legal counsel at the back of the room to comment on this if we need to, but that's why, you know, we have a posted agenda, and it has to be out in a certain timeframe by law showing anybody who cares to look what the city council is doing, what kinds of actions are going to be taken, what things are going to be deliberated during the course of the formal city council meeting. The Call to the Public wasn't something that's always been on the agenda. Back when I was first on the council 16 years ago, that wasn't an item that was on the agenda. Basically, you had the council agenda, we had our things to be discussed, and if you weren't an item on the agenda, you usually didn't get a chance to address the council. So that item was introduced to give an opportunity for the public to raise their, you know, a question or a concern that they may have about whatever it might be.
And it was at the end initially.
And initially, it was at the very end of the meeting. So people had to sit through the entire agenda before they could actually address the council. And so it's now been moved up so that you have an opportunity to address the council without having to actually sit through, you know, a couple of hours sometimes of an otherwise boring meeting. I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we have to be very careful on the council for if we're going to make a motion, if we're going to take some sort of action, it ought to be something that's noticed so that people know what to expect, they can read that, rather than just having someone approach the council, say in a Q and A, and expect the council to take some sort of action on the item that they may want to have the council. That simply can't be done without... That simply can't be done without proper notice. And so that's one of the reasons why we, we don't really necessarily take action. And, you know, I, I think it's, it's, it would be really easy, sitting up here on the council, when someone comes up and asks a question, say, questions about the redevelopment agency that we're asked earlier. It would be really easy for us to interrupt you and try to answer those questions, but the call of the public, the purpose of that call to the public is to actually hear from the public. It's, it's the public's time to ask their question or to raise their issue and make the council aware of their feelings on a certain matter, rather than for us to, to talk it out. My recommendation would be, if you have questions about the RDA, the redevelopment agency, or if you have questions about wanting to bring improved dialogue in the community, call the mayor or call one of the other, one or the other of the council members or call the entire council. As long as two council members want something to be on the agenda, we can put an agenda item on the agenda and have a deliberation and dedicate far more than three minutes to whatever your concern is. And that's perfectly legitimate. That's actually the way it should be done, so that it gets noticed on the agenda. And then, you know, we have, usually we get our agenda packet and there will be some sort of, you know, you know, Greg Franks or Dave Davies wants to address such and such a topic, and here's kinda what, some information about that, so that we have some, some knowledge to go on before we actually go into the meeting and then start our, our discussions. But, anyway, those are just some points I wanted to make about that.
Mayor, I just have a brief comment to add to that, to what Councilman Snell just said, and, and that is that I've always said that I may have to reneg on this offer, but anyone who wants to contact me, so far I've been able to do it, but if I get 30,000 emails or 30,000 phone calls, I may have to reneg. But basically, anyone who wants to contact me as a councilperson can, can do that and I'll respond. And to Chris's point, it would be a little difficult, where we meet only twice a month in that three-minute call to the public, to do all the business that we need to do if we had a back-and-forth dialogue. But I love back-and-forth dialogue, as many people know, and, and as Greg particularly knows, because he was my next-door neighbor for 17 years, and we would often stand out in the freezing cold or in the mosquitoes or whatever, and talk about political issues from national to local for an hour, and our wives would come out and say, "Where are you guys?" You know, so I love the back-and-forth dialogue, but, you know, to Chris's point, you could contact probably each one of us individually. I don't wanna speak for the rest, but I, I'm sure that any of the council people or the mayor would respond to information requests or to, you know, to dialogue with any member of the community who has a concern. So I'll just add that thought as well.
I think all good points, undoubtedly, you know, good comments, and kudos to the council for adding that call to the public in there. So definitely have learned the letter of the law, you know, on, from Chris and Jake, but I think there's, I think there's always a spirit of the law in things, and I think what these guys are perhaps getting at is, what about some of the informal stuff? Or, you know, what about just kinda like some slight feedback? You know, maybe they're not looking for us to vote on something, but, so, I don't know, I think there's a time and a place for all things, you know, to where some of that, you know, perhaps could be entertained, you know? So...
You know, as, as you've all been talking, I've had some, some thoughts come to me and reminded of some conversations that, that I've had. Certainly, I think as a city, regardless of who's serving in the positions or who's running for a position, I, I think, I, I believe there's a gen, a genuine desire to be more accessible, to be more transparent. I have yet to see a count, a candidate run for city council that says, "I wanna run, but I don't wanna be accessible. I don't wanna be transparent. I don't wanna have to talk to anybody and I don't wanna have to deal with any concerns." Usually, if you're crazy enough to run for local office, you're, you're, you have a desire to do those things. As, as some of the things that were shared, we, we, we broadcast, for example, this little camera up here to your left that's hanging off the rafter is streaming our meeting live over the internet on YouTube in 1080p high definition.
Oh, boy.
Zoomed in on you right now.
I don't like it when they zoom in on me, actually. I saw one of those back and thought, "No, thank you." But, last week, I think we had 45 viewers watching our, our meeting, which seems crazy to me, but is pretty, is something that we looked at and said, "What could we do to try and get more information out and make, make it available to more, to more individuals?" And so that is one thing we've done. That being said, it is really easy for us to just assume, because I feel the same way, with very few exceptions, in the last eight years since I've been on the council, has anyone ever reached out to me and said, "I'd like to talk to you about my issue," and I've, and I have not either met with them or discussed it with them, even if it's not in this setting. That being said, we have a member in our community who, Katie Witt, who ran for city council, and I don't wanna steal your idea, Katie, but I remember Katie said something about where she served as a council member, they did coffee with the council. In Kaysville, maybe it's hot chocolate or...
You said coffee.
Cocoa. Cocoa with the council.
Close, the council, cocoa with the council, there you go. But on, on certain days, they, on certain weekends, they have a couple of council members come and, and provide something and, and just say, "Hey, it's an open forum." So, from my vantage point, I say, I know anyone can email me and say, "The Scouts last week or two weeks ago were the perfect example." That was simply someone emailing Councilmember Snell and saying, "Could we come and talk to the council? We said, 'You bet, get on the agenda.'" That was a pretty good discussion we heard from 30 at least Cub Scouts, I think, that were here, and that was pretty awesome. So sometimes we look at that and say, "Sure, we can have a dialogue anytime you ask for it." But I recognize with some of the comments that have been made, sometimes I think if I'm reversing the role as a citizen, it's like, "Well, I don't wanna bother them. I don't wanna email them and have to sit down." But I think Katie's suggestion or, or comment, something like that, might be very appropriate for the council to occasionally have cocoa with the council at, at City Hall, and whether that's some of us or, or all of us, or whatever that might be, and at least try it out. Those who maybe don't feel like they don't wanna bother the council, or are they bothering them, might be more encouraged to take, to take that opportunity. So as we meet in the coming weeks as a city council in a, in a work session, maybe this is something that we can address, is, is more unique ways to engage and provide opportunity for, for dialogue.
Not to beat the dead horse, I just think sometimes there's times when people, you know, you folks may show up to a meeting and maybe you're unaware of something, or maybe you feel inspired, you know, to get up and say something and perhaps you'd like just a, a little bit of feedback, not an ultimate decision on that. So I don't know, I think, I just encourage the council to keep an open mind to it, that's all.
I agree. I agree. Any other comments the council would like to, to make in, in addressing any of the public comments that we were heard? That, that we've heard? All right, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on. The next item is approval of proposal to replace playground equipment at Gailey Park.
No one's here for this.
I understood that we were gonna table this for two weeks. Just kidding, I'm sorry. I was expecting more of a gas.
Six months. You mean we didn't tell them?
Or, or something. All right, it was funnier in my head.
I laughed.
Thank you, Chris. This courtesy laughs do a lot for me. We'll turn the time to Cole Stevens, our Parks Director.
Cole Stevens with Parks Recreation Department. What we have before you is the approval of the proposal for RFP number 11-15 for the replacement of the playground equipment and servicing material at Gailey Park Playground. As you've heard in the public comment, the committee that was formed, this process has been a four-and-a-half-month process with this playground equipment. It dates back even farther than that. About two-and-a-half years ago, we began the process of requesting, budgeting in our general fund budget for the replacement of the playground, and it, you know, it takes a few cycles to have, to have it, to where that, those funds are available. In our FY16 budget, we have a, or budget for the Gailey, replacement of the playground equipment at Gailey Park. So back in September of this year, as we got through the, our spring or fall season, we decided that the time was now to start forming the committee. Christopher Layton was the first one to contact Vance with the idea of being involved with the process. And so we took that involvement and kind of asked Chris to kind of formulate and get with his neighbors and kind of formulate a, about a 10-member citizens committee that could be involved with the process of this playground equipment. In your packet, I've kind of outlined, you have the proposal, the RFP that was sent out to, that was available for contractors to, to view and to solicit information and bids. We did receive six RFPs for the project. None of those are Kaysville businesses. There are no known Kaysville businesses that rep this type of playground equipment. But in the Gailey Park Playground Ad Hoc Committee and Timeline, you can kind of see the timeline and the process that we went through with this committee as far as our meetings and what happened in those meetings. The initial meeting we had with the committee was to kind of get an idea of what they were expecting, what they wanted with the playground, so that when I sent out the RFP, we kind of had some baseline information to, to submit in the RFP. And so, that RFP was then put together and, and made available, and then we had the six submittals that were shown. The following, you know, I can talk as much as you want on this, but I'll just kind of highlight just the process to understand that this committee has been very valuable to our department as far as helping us select the appropriate playground equipment for this park. This isn't the first time that we've used a committee for a playground. The first one that we went with this method was on a, kind of a, a little bit different, but was the Heritage Park Playground, where we had a committee that helped us select this design. But this is the first committee that we actually are really geared towards the citizen aspect of it, where they kind of guided the process, and then we just, from our aspect, just facilitated what could be done, what couldn't be done, the budget restraints that we had, and, you know, what, what equipment was applicable and what we just couldn't, couldn't do. So, after those RFPs were received in December, on December 3rd, we had our next committee meeting, committee meeting on December 8th, where the committee had the opportunity, each one of them to review, all six, so each, each company had the opportunity to submit a primary design and an alternate design. So there was a potential of 12 designs that the committee could, could filter through and look at and give their opinions on. So they had the opportunity to review all of those drawings and plans submitted by each one of those companies. And then after that December 8th meeting, the committee narrowed it down to two companies, Big T Recreation and Sontag Recreation, who then came before the committee in January, on January 5th, and Big T and Sontag made formal presentations, and the committee was able to ask questions, kind of an interview process, with those two vendors. And then following that meeting, the committee selected, Big T Recreation is winning the RFP for the Gailey Park Playground. And so what you have before, before you is the design that the committee selected with Big T Recreation, and staff is recommending the approval of the contract with Big T Recreation for RFP number 11-15.
And we talk about this expenditure call, for those who may not be aware in the audience, the Kaysville city's fiscal year runs from July to July. And this project, the city runs within a budget, and this has been budgeted in our fiscal year budget, and so it's not necessarily an allocation that we're saying, "Hey, we'd like to try and figure out how to come up with the $75,000 to build this." Rather, it is something that's, that has been...
Approval. Yes, the $75,000 is in our budget and our capital projects for this fiscal year budget, which runs till June 30. As projected, this will be about a two-month process between removing the equipment in the current sand and then the installation, and then with the Eagle Scout, Jared Taylor, or Jared Layton, sorry, Jared Taylor, former city councilman, but Jared Layton will be installing the, the woodchips will be just, delivered, and then Jared will be responsible for placing those woodchips throughout the playground area.
I absolutely love that the community came together, worked, and got this process all put together. Just kudos to everyone who was involved and the time and all the efforts that were put into it. The only concern that I have when I was looking at the, the playground is I saw a, a report that the color of the slides can affect how hot they get in the summertime, and they can actually burn the kids. Do we have any kind of recommendation for that, so we don't have that issue?
That's a very tricky issue, because, you know, the color does affect the, the hotness of the, of the plastic material. The two hottest colors are actually red and blue, and so we try to stay away from those as our actual slide colors. And also depends the orientation of the slide, how it faces the sun and needing sun. The advantage that we have here at Gailey Park, I don't know, did you have that aerial on it? Gailey Park is very unique that it has, we have massive trees that give that park and playground a lot of shade. So it does, it does eliminate, but the, but the hot factor of slides is, is always a concern. We try to mitigate that with the color selection and how we face it to the sun, but we can't completely eliminate the fact that it does get hot in the, in the summer months. But we try to stay away from the colors that are most...
Do they, do they offer like white slides?
White slides?
Just a thought, I know it's not...
Plastic is plastic, and so whether it's white or green or yellow, those tend to be somewhat in a similar range. The ones that they found that get the hottest are the reds and the blues. But even white plastic is still gonna get hot when it has sun.
So what color, is that not a red slide? I mean, do you...
That's orange.
Oh, okay.
So, this doesn't give you, I guess, a good indication of what, what that. And we're still fine-tuning some of the color selections as we go, but this is kinda...
This is not, this is not exact, the color coding.
The color scheming is still being tweaked with the committee, but the actual structures and how it, the equipment and what it, what is, is there is what is proposed. The colors are just an aesthetic value. But the unique thing about this playground, like was mentioned, the committee, there was a lot of different ideas and needs, and I commend the committee for having some give and take, 'cause no one was gonna get everything they wanted. It just was not physically possible with the space we had and the budget we had, but I think this overall represents, everybody got a little bit of what they had in mind. This accommodates a lot of children with disabilities that suffer from the autism disorder spectrum. And on that spectrum, there are countless different, you know, different things that those children suffer and have difficulties doing. And this playground, with all the different components, from the swinging motions of some of the, the swings and from the, the slides and from the little teeter totter and the climbing thing, it hopefully captures majority of what some of the committee members with their autistic children had, had in mind. So, we tried to accommodate as much as we could, but this is voted unanimously by the committee as the design that they have selected, and we as a staff support, support that and agree.
Cole, I'm assuming the orientation and the positioning of the different items is also up to ultimate, I mean, this is just a rendering.
No, the, the orientation's pretty much how you see it. If you look at the two little pine trees, they don't give a justice to the actual tree, the, the nice trees that we have...
They're far bigger than that.
That we have sitting in the playground that are ash trees. But this green, I'll just show you here. This right here would be 200 south.
Yeah, that's the north side of the...
Yep, and our parking lot will sit right here with the access ramp here. And we have a pavilion here, and, you know, the fields are to the, to the north. So I can answer any questions you have on the process, the design.
Well, again, Cole, I think it's a great example of, of, of how its citizen involvement should be, so thank you for your effort, and thanks for those, the committee council. Do you have further questions or discussion on this? And if not, I'd welcome a motion.
Just curious as to the, the committees, I'm sorry, perhaps if anybody else had questions, but the, the committee's decision, you know, when it, when it boiled down to Big T versus Sontag, what was the, kind of the deciding factors that went into eliminating the other four and then ultimately going with Big T? What were, what kind of went into the deciding factors there?
So when you're designing, designing a playground, all of these companies that solicited bids, that submitted RFP, have, you know, excellent products. What it boiled down to, from the committee's standpoint, was the play value that this particular design offered, overall play value, as well as the presentation when Taft Egan from Big T made his presentation, they felt like he was the one that could most meet their needs as far as working on a design element. So, the design you see here has been tweaked from the, through the process, after the, the committee selected Big T with some recommendations they had, and he came back and presented this as his final submittal. So it boiled down to play value and then the ability to work with the designer on this playground is, is being able to incorporate all the wants and desires of the committee.
They seem to be more flexible and workable, is that kinda how that...
They're all... They're all flexible, it just, I think the committee felt that this, this company was the one that offered the most play value, uh, for their, for this, uh, particular park. And we worked with, with most of these companies on different parks, um, so we have, uh, good familiarity with all these contractors and, and stuff, and it's a, it's a good product.
Have they done other facilities for other parks in Kaysville?
Uh, Playworld, so Big T represents, uh, Recreation represents Playworld Systems. Uh, Playworld Systems does not currently have a, a playground, uh, in Kaysville. We have worked with Taft Egan on a couple other projects, not, not with playground equipment, but with some other site amenities that he offers through his, uh, company, but , uh, Playworld System is the third largest, uh, commercial playground manufacturer in the world, um, so they're very well-built and, uh, a well-respected company, that we feel confident that their equipment is going to do what we need it to do for the next 15 to 18 years.
I like the process you follow, I mean, I, I see where it's in the newspaper, you know, multiple circulation newspapers, I see where you have a massive army behind you of, you know, of decision-makers, you know, so that's great, we're, we're doing what the public wants, you know, so that's cool. And then I, I, I'm just stumbling through this, I believe I've seen it elsewhere, there was a lot of bidders on this too, correct?
Uh, your, your front page, uh, has the number of bidders that were, were submitted, Big T, Buell Recreation, Garrett and Company, Great Western Park and Playground, Play Space Designs, and then Sontag Recreation. Those were the six, uh, RFP submitters that submitted proposals for the committee to consider.
So six total?
Six total.
Way to go, I just want to note, that's double the, uh, the city mandate, so, good job, Park and Rec.
No, I agree, this is beautiful. Um, what, what was the determination? I know they have different types of, uh, you know, materials you can use, I, I, it sounds like you're going with the chips.
Wood chips, correct.
Yeah, and I, I know they have other ones, uh, I, did you consider some of the other ones? I, I guess the concern is, is we're, even though we're called Kaysville, we should be hurricane, you know? Because we get those east winds, and, uh, my neighbor benefits widely from my chips I put in each year on the west side.
Correct. Um, we did consider all different kinds of, we considered a port and place, we considered a, a crumb rubber, uh, rubber tiles. If you look on the, uh, Taft, just so you can get, kind of give an idea what the, kind of the cost of some of this stuff is, part of the RFP, we asked for them to submit what it would cost, um, so it'd be on, I guess, submittal that's Exhibit A.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the line item number three, we just asked for the cost, the option for the cost of the playground if we went solid surfacing. And so you can see the cost, and that was just the cost for just the surface material. So, to, to solid surface, this whole material was going to, this whole playground was going to be $81,000 just for a surface. No equipment, no anything, just the surface material. The reason why we prefer, uh, well, the one reason, so we're going with wood chips, uh, it's biodegradable, so if the wood chips get blown in our grass, our mower operators don't have to, uh, take the time to get off a mower to pick up all the crumb rubber, uh, that is blown, uh, with the windstorms.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, sand is not, uh, by the National Playground Safety Institute, sand is kind of frowned upon because it doesn't meet the ADA requirements, uh, that have been set down by the Department of Justice, uh, for ADA compliance with the playground. So that's why you very rarely see sand in playgrounds. Uh, wood chips are deemed ADA compliant. Does that mean, I've seen wheelchairs being pushed across, it, no, but as far as the Department of Justice, wood chips are deemed as being ADA, um, compliant. So we did look at a bunch of different options for, but for, just far as sheer economics, uh, the wood chips was the most reasonable and, uh, still satisfied all of our ADA requirements.
Well, that's good. I do know that the, uh, the artificial or the rubber ones, they're hot.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'd encourage, don't go with white, though. Because, uh, boys run up them with shoes and pretty soon it looks pretty bad.
It's going to be brown.
It does look, it does look very dirty.
So anyway, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, council, any further discussion?
I just would really quick, if you don't mind, I would like to, to the committee, if we could just give them a round of applause, I, we really appreciate all the hard work that they, uh, went into this process.
Maybe they could all stand for us.
If they could stand, I don't know if the audience would be willing to just give them a round of applause.
Outstanding work, uh, well done, and I'd be...
I was just getting ready to say, at this point, a motion would be great.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the proposal to replace the playground equipment at Galey Park with the, and, and approve the, uh, the proposed, the RFP 1115 and award that to Big T Recreation.
I second that motion. Two seconds.
Wow.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Snell and a second by Councilmember Page for approval, any further discussion? Thank you. Councilmember Garn, will you start a vote for us?
Aye.
It's a park, of course, aye.
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 Thank you, voting is unanimous. Next on our agenda is...
I'll make sure you all show up and play.
The next on our agenda is process for recruitment, excuse me, adoption of a resolution requesting admission to the firefighters' retirement system.
As the council is aware, we're in the process of hiring, uh, three full-time captain positions in our fire department, and with the hiring of full-time positions, that, uh, makes those positions eligible for the Utah firefighters' retirement system. Uh, since we don't currently have full-time firefighters, uh, we need to make application to the Utah retirement systems to be accepted into that retirement system. So they have requested a resolution, uh, requesting admission into the Utah, uh, firefighters' retirement system, and so you have a res, a resolution before you for adoption.
Okay. Thank you, council, this, uh, resolution's pretty straightforward, as per Mr. Story's explanation, do you have any questions, uh, to follow up?
I do have a follow-up on that. Is it only available, the Utah retirement, uh, the state firefighters' retirement system is only available to full-time firefighter employees?
Correct.
We're staffed with, we call them volunteer, but basically they're, they're, they're paid for their work, but they aren't full-time equivalent, they're not even part-time equivalent.
They're not eligible for, for the system.
For the Utah retirement system. Do we offer any kind of a retirement for those, the, the volunteers? We have some of them that have been with the, with the city for decades.
We, we don't currently.
We don't, okay. They're not eligible for the state retirement system, but I guess I was, we don't offer them anything that maybe even not state retirement, right now.
Well, my understanding, uh, most of them have full-time jobs anyway.
Correct.
Somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah.
Just one more question, is this administered by the Utah Retirement Systems, URS, or is fire, uh, firefighters' retirement system separate from that?
It's administered by Utah Retirement Systems, so it's a division of Utah, not a division, it's a, it's a retirement system within the Utah Retirement Systems, similar to, to public employees or, uh, the judge's retirement system or, or several other retirement systems that are part of that overall system.
Right, so there are some breakouts, probably one for peace officers as well, I mean, separate designations within their retirement system, different from just a, uh, standard state employee, for example.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So with no full-timers, then, this is just in preparation for the future?
Yeah.
Wow, we're, we're about to get three full-timers, right?
We're in, we're in that process now.
Right.
And the cost to the city, just like rough ballpark idea, what does that, what does that look like?
Uh, there's a requirement that all public employees belong to the Utah Retirement System, uh, and it depends on which system you're part of, the, the firefighters' contribution is currently about 19% of, of salary.
Cole? Thank you. Any further, no further questions, I'd welcome a motion. I, uh, I motion that we, uh, we accept the resolution requesting admission to the firefighters' retirement system.
Second the motion.
Thank you, a motion by Councilmember Page and a second by Councilmember Adams for approval of the resolution, any further discussion? Councilmember Adams, will you start a vote for us, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you, the voting is unanimous. Thank you, the next on our agenda is process for recruitment of a new city manager. Uh, council, as you are aware, uh, Kaysville City Manager John Thacker has announced his intent to retire effective July 1st, 2016. He plans to depart no later than July 1st, but has indicated that he can be relieved of his active responsibilities sooner, should a suitable replacement be named and appropriate transition period pass. Um, at our last city council meeting, I indicated that I would prepare a process for the council to consider and discuss, uh, to amend as you see fit, and, uh, to, uh, adopt and, and move forward with. So I've kind of broken this process into three phases, uh, so that perhaps we don't have to have all the exact details tonight, but at a minimum, we would have at least, uh, the first part of the phase, and so my recommendation is as follows, if, on Phase One, on Friday, February 4th, 2016, or as soon thereafter as possible, post the position of city manager at the following locations, and these locations, uh, came from a couple of things. I inquired from some other, uh, city managers, primarily the city manager of, uh, Bountiful, who himself had applied to West Point and was their city manager for a while, and then became the city manager of, of Bountiful, so he was also involved in this, but based on his recommendations and some other research we've done, we would, uh, post this position in five locations. The homepage and employment sections of kaysvillecity.com, the International City Management Association website, www.icma.org, the Utah League of Cities and Towns Job Bank website at ulct.org, uh, monster.com, uh, under the city government manager selection, and then he also suggested sending notice of the, uh, posting to the University of Utah and Be, and Brigham Young University Masters of Public Administration programs, because they often distribute these type of postings to their alumni who would potentially be great, uh, candidates. Uh, we would indicate, and we'll go over the posting in just a second, that the applications would need to be received by Wednesday, March 3rd, 2016. So if we post it tomorrow, uh, we do have a leap year this year, it gives us just about four weeks, I think 28, uh, days, if I'm doing my math, you don't ever do math in public, I'm told, um, but it gives us, uh, and, and he had indicated that would be, uh, about the right amount of time. Um, applications would be directed to Kaysville City Corporation, attention Mayor Steve Hyatt, or by email at mayor.hyatt@kaysvillecity.com. Phase Two, then, assuming that we receive all the applications by March 3rd at 5:00 PM, our next city council meeting would be held on Thursday, March 4th, and so on Thursday, March 4th, during the regular scheduled city council meeting, the city council at that point would nominate and appoint an interview committee who would be charged with the responsibility of interviewing the top candidates as determined by the city council ranking, as determined by the city council ranking process. That process or that committee, um, I'm recommending that the mayor would serve as the chair of the interview committee, and other members could include, uh, one or two city council members, as allowed by state statute, and we'll ask that question to Mr. Church here in a moment. Uh, the, and the only reason why I said that is I'm not sure if we can only have one council member and the mayor, if we can have two, so that's something to, to talk about. Uh, perhaps the city finance director, he recommended, your HR director, and Dean fulfills that role, uh, a city department head, and then perhaps a city manager from a neighboring community who would have some insight as to, uh, good qualifications for a city manager that, uh, some of the, some of us on the committee may not, uh, be able to see. Uh, for example, when we did the fire department interviews a couple of weeks ago, it was myself, uh, the police chief, the fire chief, and the fire chief from, from Farmington, so it was nice to have a, uh, some insight from a neighboring community. On that same date of Thursday, March 4th, Mayor Hyatt will provide copies of all applications received to the entire city council for their review and ranking. Copies shall also be made avai, available to the interview committee that the city council would appoint that night, and so what I would envision, then, is the city council members would then take the applications, I have no idea what we can expect to receive. Uh, Farmington indicated that when they hired their manager a couple of years ago, they received about 80, uh, applications.
Eighty?
Eighty, for the city manager, uh, position. Assuming that the committee will not have, uh, be constrained by time and will not be able to interview all 80, uh, applicants, and the city council would take the, whatever amount of applications we receive, uh, would, everyone would receive a copy of them, and they would have the next week until March 10th to review the applications and maybe rank their top 10 choices from 1 to 10 of who they would like to see the committee nominate. We would compile all of those scores and communicate, uh, your, your top 10 choices to me by Thursday, March 10th. Uh, by the 12th, I would compile the average, uh, of the council's rankings and present a, a list of the top 10 candidates for the re, interview committee to interview. The members of the interview committee would, committee would meet no later than Wednesday, March 17th, to determine the appropriate day or possibly days, uh, to conduct the interviews of the top can candidates, top 10 candidates, and the mayor will provide progress updates to the city council throughout that. Once that is done, the Phase Three recommendation is, once the interviews are complete, the mayor will schedule a time for the interview committee to report their findings and recommendations to the city council. The committee would recommend their top three candidates based on the interviews to the city council, and the city council would then meet to deliberate on the recommendations of the interview committee, and if the city council would like, which I would recommend, we would schedule a time for the top three candidates to be in ti, interviewed by the mayor and the entire city council, which my guess is, David, that would be done in a public meeting typically? Or if you're interviewing someone for something like that, is that a... Maybe, this is, uh, David Church, who is, serving as our legal counsel this evening and, and also...
You could, if you wanted, interview him, obviously, in a public meeting, but the, technically, the city manager's position, you could interview in a closed session if you were going to discuss their character competency background. It's not, uh, the same as interviewing for a vacancy on the council where the state law says you can't do that in a closed session, but the city manager being in an appointed position, you could if you wished, if you thought it was necessary to preserve some, uh, privacy or...
So if we were going to ask them questions that might not reasonably be asked in a public setting, that would be a reason to...
Right, that would be a reason to, uh, and obviously, you're going to have some background in each one, and, uh, if you really wanted to do an interview and ask them things about something that you didn't, would like an honest answer to in private, you might want to consider closing the meeting, especially depending on the nature of it. For example, you may have a concern about somebody's health condition, and you wouldn't ask that in a public meeting or want, want them to share it with you.
Thank you. Um, so the city camp, members of the interview committee would meet no later than the 17th, provide updates, the council would then, uh, interview the, the three candidates, and again, the timing of this and the exact process the council, uh, wants to follow, I'm not suggesting needs to be determined tonight, but kind of a, a roadmap of what we would likely, uh, what we would likely do and could, of course, be tweaked. Uh, the city council would meet to deliberate in the recommendation, interview them in public. Uh, once the city council has decided, the mayor could then extend an offer to the selected candidate and begin discussions of the terms, uh, benefits, et cetera. As I receive, if I've heard feedback from neighboring cities who have went through this process, uh, they said, believe it or not, when you find someone that you like the best and you say, we'd like to offer you the job and pay you this much, don't expect that they'll come back and say, oh, that's super, I'll take it. Uh, there's likely going to be some discussion and, and negotiation, and so we would report that, uh, back and forth. So that is the, the proposed process, um, and before we get into the discussion of that, I am just going to, and I, and I know everybody just loves hearing somebody read, uh, but the posting is also what we'd want to address, and so we received, uh, as it stands right now, there are no, apparently no open city manager positions for a city anywhere in the state of Utah. There are, uh, open positions in Colorado, um, I can't even remember what the other cities were. I sent you all a copy of, uh, of, of the postings, we had four or five. Some of them were very fancy, some, uh, contracted with, uh, had hunter firms and had this big glossy, uh, thing that folds out, and, uh, um, you know, it was, it was kind of interesting. Uh, so we did our best, uh, I, I asked Dean, who is, uh, our human resources, uh, person and as well as our finance director, and now our city recorder, um...
(laughing).
Uh, to, uh, to kind of help me with this, and so Dean out, uh, laid out the majority of this information based on the, on that feedback, and then together we made some tweaks, but, uh, it's... But it's simply entitled, "The City of Casel, Utah Is Seeking a Creative, Results-Oriented Leader to Be Its Next City Manager." Community profile, Casel is located along the Wasatch Front, directly between Ogden to the north, Salt Lake to the south. Casel is located essentially in Davis County, primarily a bedroom community with a current population of approximately 30,135 residents. Casel experiences an average growth of 2.5% to 3% due to proximity of larger economic centers and the desire of the citizens to, for the city to remain a residential community. The build-out population is estimated at 42,000 within the next 20 years. The position profile, the city manager is appointed by the mayor and city council, and serves as the chief administrative officer for the city. The city is responsible for directing, the manager is responsible for directing various city departments and providing guidance in directing, supervising, coordinating, and planning the day-to-day administration of the affairs of the city and the implementation of policies established by the city council. The manager ensures that the entire community is served efficiently and effectively and efficiently by providing direct management oversight to city departments. The city manager oversees seven departments, administration, community development, police, fire, and rescue, public works, parks and recreation, and power. Full-time employees are approximately 95. The city budget for all operations, including enterprise activities, is approximately $35 million, and a general fund with a budget of $13 million. Education and experience, candidates for the city manager position will possess a master's degree in public administration, business administration, or related field, and have a minimum of five years of public sector administrative and managerial experience, with at least three years as a city manager or administrator, or as an assistant or department director. Equivalent education and experience will be considered. Candidates must have a strong fiscal background and experience in economic development and strategic planning. The ideal candidate will have exceptional communication, interpersonal, and positive relationship-building skills, technological skills, and be engaged in the community in making a long-term commitment to the city. Compensation and benefits, as we currently have programmed for the city manager, includes a salary range between $72,925 and $118,352 commensurate with experience. A comprehensive benefits package is available. The application selection process, qualified candidates should admit a cover letter, resume, professional references, and any other information they deem relevant. The application deadline is Wednesday, March 3rd, 2016, at 5:00 PM. Application should be directed to Casel City Corporation, attention Mayor Steve Hyatt. So, that may not seem like a lot, but took a really long time to put together.
Need a drink?
Yeah, actually, I do. So, I think at this point, we would open it up. I've sent this to you, so you have an opportunity. The outline we sent last night, the posting we sent today, so I know you haven't had a lot of opportunity to review, but I would just open it for any discussion, any things that stand out to you, tweaks, adjustments, where we can throw the whole thing out and start from the beginning.
Mayor, the Friday tomorrow is the 5th, not the 4th.
Thank you. I think I might have been looking at February's calendar. All right, so there's one change already, and that was on...
Phase 1, Friday, the 5th.
Friday, February 5th. Oh, I guess I would have looked at February's calendar, but I'm not sure how I came up with the 5th. Maybe the wrong year.
We forgive you. It's all good.
Mayor, I guess I'll start off here, but I think, as I looked through, I did have a chance to read through the whole process, and actually, the other cities' recruitment flyers, and it seems that the process that you've laid out here seems rigorous and thorough, and involves, you know, diversity on the review committee to cut it down, and also, this looks like pretty good criteria, and seems to follow the criteria that's set out here, seems to follow standard practice, in a way, and also be tailored to Casville. I guess one question I would have, if we do end up getting 80, you know, being the only position in Utah, and actually, of course, I might be biased, but I think this, you know, a pretty choice-plum position, you know, here in Casville. So we may, you know, get at least 80 candidates. And rather than, I'm wondering if we set up some criteria that are in here. For example, you say candidates will possess a master's degree in public education. So if there couldn't be, you know, the fast review, right, if someone doesn't meet the required criteria, they could be eliminated, and we wouldn't then go into detailed review of those that didn't meet the... Not that, you'd want to have some flexibility, right? You wouldn't want to eliminate a good candidate just because they didn't have X, Y, or Z. But if we could agree on certain core qualifications, if they didn't meet those, then they could be eliminated and narrow the field a little bit.
Well, and I think that that process could be perhaps adopted by the city council. Whatever review committee we ultimately appoint, really, the ones outside of the city council would be the neighboring city manager consultants, assuming the council would like to go that direction, the department head, and Mr. Story. Ideally, from my, in my opinion, the city council should be the ones, I think we could still rely on feedback from those individuals, but I would like to see the council be the ones to kind of narrow it down. So in your own sifting process, I think that's something that we could be done. If we had someone who said, you know, I've been the act, I've been the city manager of a city for the last five years, and I'm about to complete my Masters of Public Administration, and I just received the Presidential Award for Saving Cities Money by Efficiency, I would hate to knock him out, just because, you know, he's not quite there.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think those compensating factors, I think if we just ask the council, as your, because the council needs to be the one that decides who those top candidates are, then that would probably be one of mine, unless there was some other compensating factor. I don't really know that such an award exists, but that would be...
No, that makes sense, and I would agree with that.
Sounds good.
I think we'd, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Sure.
I think we definitely need a criterion, a requirement, for a guy who's been to outer space. Anybody know a guy? But...
I only know one, and he's 83, and I don't think he wants the job.
[laughing]
No, the only concern that I would express is, if I'm trying to put myself in the new guy's shoes here, you know, the guy who's maybe, you know, looking at our current website, and kind of getting a general feel for who we are as a city right now, you know, and, you know, the guy's probably not going to have a chance, I don't know, you know, if there's much of a chance he'll have to be involved with the budget process for this year. So that'd be one concern that I would, that I'll throw into the bucket, you know, that maybe is there a way to just try and expedite this a little bit, to where that guy doesn't feel slighted? The only thing I see coming down the pipeline, perhaps, is, you know, maybe come December, or, you know, January, February, March, if we do get some kind of a budget question or an issue, you know, that guy might, you know, just say, hey, I don't know, I wasn't there. So I think, I think it would be good to see this guy have, you know, some degree of participation in the budget. So I don't know if there's a way to expedite that, and I don't know the budget deadlines exactly, but if we can make sure we try and act swiftly on the behalf of, you know, the new guy. Or gal, sorry, or gal.
Just remind me, Dean, the staff typically, which largely includes yourself and the city manager, prepares a preliminary budget and presents to the city council by the first meeting in May, or is it the second meeting in May?
You have to adopt a tentative budget by the first meeting in May. We typically review that five or six weeks prior to that.
Can you all hear? Okay, we just say that again in the microphone.
Saying that we, by statute, you have to adopt the tentative budget by the first meeting in May. But we typically review the budget four to six weeks in advance of that, as we put the tentative budget together.
And then we adopt a final budget by when?
By June 22nd.
And so, to answer your question, Councilmember Adams, I think with, depending on our timing, if we do follow this timeframe, who knows? If the one that ultimately the council thinks is the best candidate says, I can't start until June 1st, for example, I would think that would probably be, have lots of, well, if we follow this process, I think that would be very realistic. I think possibly even sooner would be realistic. We would have a tentative budget, but when the staff presents a tentative budget to the council in May, the council at that point can accept it, or we can scrap the whole thing and change things around. So I do, this is my long answer to say, I do think there will be an opportunity for, if we have someone in line, to be able to look at that and say, welcome, glad to have you here, we're going to want you to jump right into this, because we have started in initial preparations. We'll have a work session, we plan to talk about budgetary items, primarily priorities for the council to say, we want to make sure we're accomplishing these things this year, give that direction to staff and the department heads to prepare a budget based on those. But I do think there will be overlap for a new city manager to do that.
Yeah, I think, I think with all due fairness, you know, to the new guy just watching out, you know, to not give him like, hey, you have a week to wrap your head around this. So I just think if we move swiftly, so that he also has a moment to, you know, to be by John's side, and to become up to speed with the budget, and with Dean. So the other thing would just be finer details, and I think you addressed it, we'll be talking about those as time goes on. One that rolls off the top of my head is, you know, perhaps a contract, you know, with an annual review for the new guy, you know, just let him know kind of squarely where we stand as a city.
That's actually a really, a really good point. I think when, maybe we can just include, under Phase 3, once the interviews are complete, the interview committee shall recommend their top three candidates, the city council shall meet to deliberate the recommendation, the mayor will extend, so once the city council has decided on a candidate, perhaps we can say, the mayor and council will draft a contract to be presented to the new city manager. And then that would just give us, if we add the words, so on that third, fourth bullet point, once the city council has decided on a candidate, the mayor and council will draft a contract, I hate to do this on the fly, but I draft a...
An employment contract?
Yeah, will draft a contract that will be extended as an offer to the selected candidate, or something like that. And then that way, as we get closer, my gut would tell me that, that once the review committee tells us who they like, and we determine a date to interview these final candidates, after the review committee has reported their findings, I think that would be an appropriate time for the council to say, okay, we've got our three that we're about to interview, let's be very specific on what this contract is going to look like.
Well, and to, to Councilman Adams' point, too, I think that's a good point. I did notice, if you look at some of the other cities, either in Utah or elsewhere, they may have sort of a contract review provision, actually, in ordinance. I don't know, for the city manager, I don't know that we necessarily need one in ordinance, because you could put that in the contract, sort of have an option to renew, but you're going to review performance on, you know, and put that in the contract like every three years, or something like that, with an option to review, and that way, you, I think, I would think you could either put it in the, you wouldn't need it in ordinance, so you could put that in the contract.
Well said, yeah.
So we'll, in between, well, the second and third bullet point, we'll add something that, as, and I'm paraphrasing, but that the city council will deliberate and prepare a contract of expectations and reviews that will be discussed, because that would be very appropriate, if we've got our final three people here to say, the city council has prepared this contract, which outlines expectations and what we'd like to see. Do you have any concerns with that? And that would be a good, a good time to, instead of saying, great, you want the job, here we've got. So you raised a really good point on timing.
And he just knows out of, he or she, once again, knows out of the gate, you know, I'm under contract, I'll face the review committee and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
In fairness to whoever it may be.
Yeah, I like the timing on this. It's soon enough here that, because, let's face it, if we get a top candidate, they're likely in a position somewhere else right now, and so they'll have to give their notice to that other location, or that other entity, meaning they probably won't start, I mean, it would probably be optimistic that they would be able to start May 1st even. That might be optimistic. But I think that's, it's possible, with this timeframe, to get that done. And then there is some overlap, where John, can they, help them understand the budget that we put together, the tentative budget as well, and get ready for the new fiscal year? So...
Yeah, I like it, Mayor. Well done.
I agree, it's possible. I've heard it been, that it's been done in a few, a matter of days before, so I agree, it's definitely possible that we should get him here in time to really get him up to speed on things.
You bet.
Give him a run start.
Hit the ground running.
Boy, I'm terrible.
No, I, no, I agree. I think it's a, I think it's a good approach, what we're looking at, but, you know, in reality, we have a lot to do, too, as a council, to prepare for this, and that's going to take a little bit of time as well. So I think this is actually good.
I have one last requirement, if we can have it in bold print, underlined, pencil like this, this, he or she has to be a huge supporter of the 4th of July.
Okay, we want to hire an American, is that what you're saying?
I'm not discriminating against nationality here, against country of origin.
So the primary feedback that I heard now, the other part of the outline that I mentioned, and this was just as I was researching options, I don't see any reason why we can't have this posted on the city website by tomorrow. We don't have Linda, and Ryan's out of town, but Dean can post, all right. The Bountiful city manager indicated that he could circulate it on the International City Management Association website, or direct us to do that, and there might be a small fee. The League of Cities and Towns website, a job bank website is free to post on. Monster.com is, I don't even know if that's the best one, just when I was Googling city manager positions, that came up in several different spots. I've never posted a job on Monster, so I assume there will be some cost associated with doing that, but my gut tells me Dean's real eager to do that for us, so he could probably figure that out. That may not be by tomorrow. I don't know if there's some kind of review process that needs to happen. And then we'll need to find out who at the University of Utah and BYU's Masters of Public Administration program we need to contact, and so, whether or not they distribute that out to their alumni by tomorrow, might be a question. So that's why I added, as soon as possible. But the other places that we have control over, Job Bank, I know it's going to be quick, I think the ICMA will be quick, Casel City's website will be quick, so at a minimum, and I'm saying, I'm declaring that it's possible, and then asking Dean to do it all, but at a minimum, I think we can, we can have them posted by, at a minimum, those tomorrow and the others, in the next day or two, business day or two.
Just make one comment about Bountiful. We just seem to rely on Bountiful for a lot of things. I just want to encourage us, maybe, to go to a closer neighbor, you know, like Farmington, you know, they border us, and might just help develop more relationships with the media's neighboring cities.
Sure.
And I know you mentioned Farmington, too, so that'd be cool to get that manager's help.
Yeah, both, and we could also, if we were interested, get more than one manager's help. Both of them have offered specifically to participate in any level that we would, that we would like them to. And so, Bountiful, we did use the Bountiful chief, as we were interviewing for police chiefs, and he was involved in that process. I think that's the only other time we've used them. The one reason why I was interested, when he made that offer, is because they are a city with a power utility. So I think he's got some unique...
It's really a Viewmont Viking, David Starr thing, you know, which is so...
I see, okay, all right.
Bountiful lights are crowning up our streets, man. We've got to keep them at bay, dude. Farmington.
Farmington goes to Viewmont, though, too.
Some of them, I guess.
Most do.
Yeah.
The less desirable ones.
Ouch.
Sorry Vikings.
All right. So the two modifications, then, is the correction of date onto February 4th on Phase 1, the addition of negotiation of a contract, and we kind of paraphrase that language, and so we'll modify that. And this is really, and we'll send you an updated version of this to the council. This really, this process isn't necessarily being, well, I guess it is being adopted tonight. So with those two modifications, that would be our process that we're recommending, so I'd welcome a motion to approve the process with those modifications as outlined.
I'll make a motion to approve the process for hiring a new city manager.
With those modifications?
With, I'm sorry, with the modifications.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion by Councilmember Garn, and a motion, second by Councilmember Snell, for approval of the process as outlined. Any further discussions?
Just a quick question. So the timeline will remain, you know, unseen, that won't be revealed out with this?
Well, I think it's probably yet to be determined. The timeline of when applications will be posted... will be posted, when they're due, when they'll be made available to the city council, and when the city council should narrow their top candidates, their top 10 candidates, all of that will be completed by Friday, March 12th.
Let me rephrase. So the timeline tomorrow, if Dean puts, if this goes viral tomorrow, the timeline's not going to go with it, right? So that will still-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That'll be behind the scenes, is what I'm saying.
Right, yes, yes. Not, not necessarily-
But other than, we'll probably need a deadline to go with an application deadline of Phase One.
Right, which is the February, which is the March 3rd at 5:00 PM. So applications must be received by then. You'll all get a copy of everything on March 4th. You'll all need to, you'll have a week to review the applications, report back what your top choices are by March 10th. And the review, and we will appoint a review committee on March 4th, and that committee will meet, or will, will meet shortly thereafter, but before March 17th to determine, to review and discuss the top choices of the council, and then to, to say, okay, we can, on March 20th, we'll, and 21st, I don't even know what those dates are, we'll interview the top 10 candidates on those two dates or something like that.
Gotcha. In my opinion, just clear, I just feel like that could be moved up a week, opinion of one, so.
Okay. The, if, if anyone wants to speak to, to that, too, or if you'd like to, to modify that, I, I think this is a pretty aggressive timeframe. The only, the only other thing I would add, maybe that I didn't add here, and I think maybe these other phases we could keep a little bit fluid. One thing I saw in the Colorado, which city was it?
Grand Junction?
Grand Junction.
Yeah, Grand Junction.
Grand Junction. They had a thing at the end that I think probably goes without saying, but we could discuss that as we get closer. But it's, of course, a, a criminal background check and a, a check of their references would be, would be very, very appropriate. We did that when, when we hired, the chief did an extensive background check, and, and there are those available who, who can do that. So we might add that as we get closer to the phase, just knowing that these phases two and three, since we're going to appoint people, we can, we can massage those as we get closer.
Just put that burden of background check on Officer Ellington back there, solely on him. All 80 of them. Tear it up.
Is that Officer Ellington? I didn't recognize it with that.
You see the glimmering?
What, is that, is that a face mask?
It's Charlie Chaplin.
Oh, it's a mustache.
So Dave, are you saying that you think that the closing date for applications should be sooner than March 4th, that-
I feel like it could be moved up a week, personal opinion, that, just like in lieu of the concern that I expressed about, you know, you know, the guy's got to have, the guy or gal's got to have time to say to their current employment and going. And I know that might create some urgency in them, and the budget, in lieu of the budget thing. I just, I think it might be wise for them to be a co-partner with Mr. John Thacker in that.
Yeah. I, I would go for that, just bumping it up a week. I don't see any problem with that.
I, from my perspective, we advertised a planning commission position for a month. We advertised a city council position for a month and a half to advertise arguably as important, if not more of a position. And, and just, and I'm not-
Oh, sure.
-criticizing, but, but-
Just discussion.
Thinking, you know, putting urgency with the most important position. Those two seem, I, I think we want to be expedient, but there, there's something that feels, you know, and, and I'll be the first to tell you, I've only talked to one city manager about that timeframe. And, you know, my initial thought was like 45 days would be a, a good chance to really let it get out there and, and be known. Less than 30, in my mind, I thought, man, I, I sure hope the council doesn't go for less than 30. This ends up being, I think, 28 total. I think going less than that would, would give the appearance that, that it's an urgent of nature. But we do, I think we need to balance that with being thorough and not, not rushed. So being expedient, but not rushed.
Can we take a vote on it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, may I make one more comment? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That'd be okay. First of all, just a gut reaction impression, I thought the schedule was sort of aggressive. My first impression was that that's pretty aggressive to get it done that quickly. And, and then second comment, just from the standpoint of hiring, in the last 10 years, we've had a fair number of financial analysts and examiners go, and so we do a fair amount of hiring as they go on to greener pastures, I guess, and are trained. And my experience has been that if you make the period too short, and this is pretty good coverage, and maybe it'll have a lot of interest, so maybe you could go a week less, you just don't know. But the problem is, if you, you know, the difference of one week, if you cut it too short, and you don't find what you want in that, then you're, you have to throw the net out again, which we've had to do, not very often, but once.
But could you, that's a good point.
You could do, but it's sort of, you know, less efficient and takes more time and not something I'm proud of, that we had to do it because it took more work, right? So trying to be efficient. In this case, I would agree with you, Mayor, that it's, just my opinion, that it would be better to get this right rather than to save, save one week.
Somebody just needs to educate me on the proper wording to motion for a vote.
So right now, we have a motion by Councilmember Garn and a second by Councilmember Snell for approval of the outline with the modifications that were-
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't make a motion. You just mentioned Garn?
Uh-huh.
No, you did.
I made, oh, I'm sorry, oh, okay.
The plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not this, yeah.
All right. So I'm, so what, what I'm kind of bringing this back to is, right now, we have that motion and that second on the table. If you wanted to offer a substitute motion and receive a second, we would vote on your substitute motion. If it passed, then that would be the direction we would head. If it did not pass, then we would revert back to the original motion from Councilmember Garn and Councilmember Snell.
So I'd like to motion that we make a substitute to that of just moving it up, moving the application deadline up one week.
So the previous changes that had been made with the application deadline to be one week sooner than March 3rd.
Fourth or third, correct. If you check the right calendar.
I don't have my phone.
Got you.
We have the calendar.
We have a calendar in here.
Oh, we have a calendar in our pocket. Well, I forgot that they make paper calendars.
Basically, that moves it from the 3rd to the 25th of February, right? To move it up a week.
Right.
So instead of a council meeting on the 3rd, applications we do, I guess, on the, well, let's see, what is the verbiage on it on Phase One? It's, it's currently set at March 4th. Or the, the due date for applications is March 3rd, which means if bump that up, that's February 25th. So that's three weeks from today.
25th would give a week to kind of reel them in before that council meeting on the 4th, is it, also?
Yeah, I've also got my dates wrong on, I have on here Wednesday, March 3rd, and March 3rd is actually a Thursday, so my, my, my intent was to-
You're starting to sound like me, dude.
My intent was to have the, have it on Wednesday, March-
Second.
Second, so that we had a day to make copies and then provide them to you at the meeting. And then the other reason why I would, kind of why I suggested that timeframe was if we do move it up a week, at that point, at least per the current process, we don't have the other committee members appointed yet, so the council would have the opportunity. But I think we'd give the majority of the ranking to the, to the council, but would be interested in the other committee members' feedback. But I do have to recognize, we do have a substitute motion provided by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second to his substitute motion? I think I need to count down, three, two. All right. Hearing no second to the, to the, hit the substitute motion, the, the motion fails, we move back to the original motion, which was made by Councilmember Garn and Councilmember Snell. Dates remain as is, but the timeframe for-
Yeah, I guess you just need to change that one day.
We just need to modify the dates. We've got a couple of dates in there.
Yeah, yeah. So we might want to restate, state that motion. Maybe I was looking at a 2015 calendar. So I anticipated that deadline to be Wednesday, March 2nd, 2016. The applications, then, as we go to the process, would be, we corrected Friday, March, Friday, February 5th, it gets posted. As we go down here, on Thursday-
You need to go to the 3rd.
On Thursday, March 3rd, under Phase Two, and Thursday, March 3rd, on Phase Two, for copies being provided. I guess we should look at my March 10th and see if that's really a Thursday.
March 10th is a Thursday.
Hey, how about that? I got one right.
But March 12th is not a Friday.
Jeez.
March, that's March 11th.
March 11th. All right. I will tell you that I did this late at night, and so I-
And Wednesday, March, where March 17th is a Thursday.
So Wednesday, March 16th.
So Wednesday, March 16th.
So we're one day ahead on all of these.
I've been looking at a 2015.
Mm-hmm, maybe.
So would we get the, so the applications, the cutoff would be the 2nd?
Yes.
And then we would get those in time for this meeting?
We would provide them to you at the meeting on Thursday, the 3rd.
Right. At which time, we then take them home, we have a full week to chew on them.
And then you report back your top choices by the 10th.
Okay. Okay. So that would give us time, in case then?
We don't have a meeting on the 10th that's scheduled for that. That's a planning commission meeting, so we just get them to you.
It is simply a report back of what your top choices are by the 10th. We would then meet as a committee no later than the 17th, I think is what I have. And that's a full week after the council reports back their top choices. But just the reality of saying, okay, you've had a chance to review, the council let us know by Thursday, the 10th, and we may meet as soon as the 11th, or the 14th, or the 15th. I just wanted to be, to say, worst case, we would meet by the 17th so that we could tell you that we've met as a, as a committee on the, on the 17th.
Cool. That was the reasoning behind it, just that it kind of landed on council nights, if we did shift it back, but.
That's true.
So, do you need a substitute, or can we include those modifications?
We can go back, assuming you're-
I'll amend my motion to include those modifications to the dates.
And I'll second it, again.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion and a second for approval with the corrected dates as, as outlined. And I wrote that one, so I can't even blame Dean for getting the dates wrong, darn it.
Including the contract item, too.
And, and the amendments.
And, yeah, right, and the amendment of the contract item. We have that on there. And do you have notes as well, what we're changing? Okay. All right. So with that, I will call for a vote then on this process. Councilmember Lee, will you start a vote?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Thank you. The motion carries four to one. Next on our agenda is discussion of the revised ordinances. Let me back up because I know that we're not typing minutes at the moment. The motion carries four to one with Councilmember Dave Adams voting against. Just, I'm not sure if someone's going to listen to this recording later and type them up, but I just thought I'd better clarify that. Next on our agenda is discussion of the revised ordinances of Kaysville City. We do also have a legal council who represents the League of Cities and Towns, Mr. David Church, that will recognize, that can provide any feedback regarding legalities to the council. But this agenda item was asked to be placed on the agenda, the request to Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Lee, and so we'll turn it to them.
Ladies first. All right. Do you defer? Basically, you know, in lieu of time, I guess, kind of in a nutshell, I'm not, I'm not particularly thinking that, you know, that, that we revise the whole Bible, pardon the pun, or the whole municipal code. I think there's some areas in there, and this really kind of stems back also to the concern about, you know, the new candidate, the new city manager coming in. What context do we as a city, do we as citizens want them coming in underneath? Currently, and, and I could stand corrected here, currently, though, in Kaysville Municipal Code, a lot of the power rests in the manager position currently. You know, for instance, you know, department heads, that's all underneath the umbrella and control of the city manager. And the only contradiction or thing I find contrary to that, I guess, is having done some research on the surrounding cities, that's not the case with our immediate neighbors, Fruit Heights, Farmington, and Centerville. And so that's not, I mean, for, for example, in some of these surrounding cities, you know, in ours, it's, it's not quite as clearly spelled out as even some of the, the roles of the individual department heads. But on, you know, department heads themselves, this is Centerville, for example, you'll allow me a minute just to get there. Let's say, we won't pick on the chief of police, I know he's got cuffs on him back there. You know, even like the, the, sorry, wrong section. But what, what it says under all the department heads is that, that, you know, they're, they kind of serve at the pleasure and will of the council, you know, and, and that's similar to how John currently serves, is kind of at the council. And some of the, to spare you some of this, I mean, this is an open book, I can leave it out on the table, anybody can look at it, but to spare you some of this, I guess some of the reasoning is, I just feel like, does the city have a desire to share that load across this whole table in the near future? You know, is that something that we see that, that would be a benefit to the citizens, that would help the citizens feel more involved, knowing that they can go to their council person with a concern, and, you know, that council person carries a little bit more weight? Please don't misunderstand me, I do not, I don't like power, you know, contrary to what some might feel. It's not what this is about. I think if we share it across, I love brainstorming, and I think if we share this load across six people, then we have the ability to brainstorm with that and, and take a look at people. And it also still allows, and it will allow the future city manager in, in all these other cities, it allows him the, the absolute input with recommendations on, you know, who to hire, who not to hire. So it's not, it doesn't completely eliminate the city manager from, from these activities. But I feel like going forward, it's a concern that, that I feel that is, is felt throughout the city. And I can only say that because I recently campaigned last summer. And I think it's something that, that people would really appreciate us getting behind and saying, yeah, you know what, let's, let's kind of go back. I think perhaps, and I don't know how, when, or why, and I don't know if that really even matters at this point, but I think perhaps we've strayed a little bit from where the state is at. I think these guys, all these three cities I studied, follow the state, you know, a little bit more. Now, keep in mind, I'm a spirit of the law guy, you know, so I'm not saying I'm a letter of the law guy either. But I think it's, it's critical for, if we're going to put this out there, that there needs to be a clear understanding of definition of what that role is, and I guess what power comes underneath that role for that individual. So I'd just like to put that up there for discussion.
Yeah. And, and that was my concern as well, just going back and looking at these other cities. They all seem to have more discretion put upon the council, who the people elect, rather than the city manager as far as with, in regards to the department heads directly with them. As far as the rest of the, of the employees in the city, they would, they would fall within the department heads and the city manager, not the city council.
So, so maybe it would help to kind of stage this discussion. Mr. Church, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but when the, when the state legislature established the ordinances of the organization of the city and the powers and duties of the respond, powers and duties of the city manager and the council, could you just maybe give us a, a, maybe a summary of, of how it's started and then the changes that, that cities make?
Yeah, I can give you a little history on it for your-
Will you move the microphone right to your-
Can you, is, is it better now?
That's it.
Yeah, it's an interesting thing. It, it has a, a long history. You're a six-member council form of government, and in 2008, the legislature looked at this issue and readopted and, and reestablished the ordinances, or the state statutes on that form of government. They did it in part in response to conflicts between mayors and councils in your form of government about who's in charge on, for the day-to-day affairs. But that's been a long-running dispute in your form of government. Prior to what they did in 2008, the, the state statutes were basically this. You do not have branches of government in your form. The mayor and the council sit as a committee governing the city. That's why you often see the phrase governing body. You have a governing body, but in that governing body, the mayor, as an individual, was given under state statute individual powers. That mayor's individual powers was to be the chief executive officer and the chief administrative officer to whom all employees would report. That mayor's individual powers was to be the chief executive officer and the chief administrative officer to whom all employees would report. In many cities, mayors did not want to have that power, didn't have the time, or didn't want to have it. In many cities, council members thought their mayors weren't capable of having that power and didn't want to have it. And very often, you ended up with disputes between mayors and councils about how to run the, the city. The state statute said the council as a whole would establish the policies of the city, and the mayor was required to carry out the policies. As a dispute resolution mechanism, in my mind, back then, they had a system in state code that said, the council could, by ordinance, establish the position of city manager, and delegate some or all of the mayor's administrative powers to the position of city manager. So many cities did that. And so each ordinance in each city would be slightly different. The limitations on the council's powers to, to delegate to the city manager, the, the executive powers, were that you could not delegate the chair, his vote, or her vote, and any ex officio duties. But up to those duties, you had the power to delegate those by ordinance to a manager. Councils at that time didn't have the power to take it from the mayor and give it to themselves. Their choice was, leave it with the mayor, or take it from the mayor and give it to a paid professional that answered to the council. Most cities your size and above, who weren't under the strong mayor form of government like Ogden and Salt Lake, eventually did that, created a position, called it either a city manager or a city administrator. And each of those cities defined in that ordinance what powers of the mayor they were delegating. In 2008, because of the, the big battles, the legislature, as I said, rewrote the whole thing and changed it slightly. They shifted the power away from the council. Prior to 2008, the council with just a majority vote, three votes could do it, and the mayor couldn't do anything about it. They shifted that power away from the council and put more power back to the mayor by saying that if a council in your form of government wanted to do that, they could only do it by having the mayor consent, along with a majority of the council, or a unanimous council over the mayor's objection. They also gave the mayor a vote on the issue, it's one of the issues the mayor voted on. And then the other thing they did, they grandfathered in all of these type of ordinances that were passed prior to May, uh, 2008. Your ordinance predated the 2008, so it's a grandfathered ordinance. Your choice on, when you talk about administrative powers, who the employees respond to? Who, who, who is the department head's boss? Your choice is the mayor or a city manager. If you want to take power away from the city manager and enhance the mayor's position, the mayor has to consent to that, or you needed a unanimous council. If you want to take more power away from your mayor and give it to your, you now have that, by the way, after 2008, in theory, the council members could be given the administrative power as well. But you haven't done that in your ordinance. If you wanted to enhance the mayor's power or decrease the mayor's power, you're, you need unanimity among your council, basically saying, mayor, we're going to do it whether you want it or not. If you don't have unanimity, then you're, then in my opinion, you can't, you can't do it. So your choice that you're talking about here is say, let's have a city manager ordinance more like Clearfield, or more like, who else did you look at, Farmington's, more like that. If you did that, you would need the mayor to agree with it, or you would need a unanimous council to do that, or you're kind of stuck with your ordinance the way it is. Does that make sense?
Sure.
It's a very complicated thing. Your default provision, if you had no ordinance at all, if you did not have a city manager position at all, if you didn't have that in your, your mayor would be, in essence, the administrative officer of the city, and would have the power to, to carry out your policies, and the department heads would answer to him. And you'd be operating like Salt Lake City, where they bring in a department head, she fires all the department heads, the new mayor, and is now trying to appoint some, and the council gives advice and consent. Now, your ordinance, your city manager ordinance is as clear as any of I've seen, it's more aggressive than many. It is very different than a lot, in that it clearly says that John's position, the department, hires and fires the department heads. But that's, whoever wrote it, at the time they wrote it, obviously wanted it that way. Your decision now is, if you want to change that, then you'd have to decide, if you change that, are you going to put it back to the mayor as being the one that appoints and hires and fires? If the mayor says, no, I don't want it, and I want the city manager to have it, I think the mayor, and the mayor has at least one friend on the council who agrees with him, then it stays that way. If your, five of you council members say, mayor, we're going to take it away from you, and take it away from the city manager, and it's a unanimous decision, then you could rewrite your ordinance and pass that, the way the law's now written.
Is there a? I didn't know that. So it can either rest in the manager position, the mayor position, or on five members, right?
Yeah.
Three distinct.
But in order to do that, you're going to need all five of you to.
Oh, sure.
Or the mayor consent to it.
Yeah. So, but there are three separate entities that could bear the load of, of that.
Oh, there's even more than that. You could be as creative as you wanted. But really, what you've got is, that's a power of the mayor, or a power of the manager, you've delegated that power to your, to your manager under your ordinance.
Could there be an override clause, have you ever heard of that, to where it's maybe a shared load between manager and, you know, to where if?
You could, you have the flexibility in your form of government to design it any way you want. The question is, who has the power to design it? You need all five council members to agree, if the mayor is saying, if, if, if you're changing the manager's ordinance, you need the mayor to say, yes, I agree, and a majority of the remaining council agree. If the mayor says, I'm happy the way it is, then you would need all five of you to agree to basically override that.
Okay.
Just a couple of technical questions, I guess. So in the Utah Code, Title 10, the portions that were there prior to 2008, in Senate Bill 20, in 2008 legislative session, then changed and took out some language that basically was in Title 10.3. The new, the new section is Chapter 3B.
That's right, I've got it in front of me too.
Right, and this section, Chapter 3, used to say something very similar to Kaysville's ordinance, which I've now left that page, but it's basically, I think, 242, or something like that, which basically stay, is sort of a non-interference clause, very similar to the state statute prior to 2008, which said, no member of the council shall direct a request, except in writing, appoint, and then it goes down and says, the council shall not give orders to any subordinate of the mayor or manager, either publicly or privately, but may make suggestions and recommendations.
Yeah, now let me tell you, and, and what you're looking at is, it gets a little confusing, because prior to 2008, there was an optional form of government available in the state called the city manager form of government. And the, it, the legislature removed that from the code in 2008, and said, you can no longer have that form, but grandfathered in those cities that have it. Now, that section of your Kaysville code that, that you quoted was in that optional form in state law and mandated. But you've never had the city manager optional form. But when the drafters of your ordinance that gave power to the city manager drafted their ordinance, they tracked that state code city manager form very carefully, almost identically. Which was, which wasn't, it wasn't repealed by the state legislature when they repealed the state law, it didn't affect your ordinances, they grandfathered in your ordinances.
Right, because it gives the latitude, right, for the cities to draft their own ordinance. And I'm just curious, John, I don't know if you know, but when was that section of ordinance, which is under one of these tabs I have, but it, here it is, oh, that's a different one. When was that section in Chapter 2, when was that put into city ordinance?
It was adopted in May 1980, before I was hired. That's when the city manager ordinance was adopted. They created the position of city manager in May 1980, and then hired me, effective in July, July 1st, 1980.
Thank you. And just a couple of more questions. So if we wanted to change it and not be grandfathered anyway anymore, I mean, I do know that if we wanted to go to, for example, a strong mayor form.
You'd need a vote.
Of government, which actually separates the branches, similar to when my dad was mayor of Salt Lake, and they had a commission, that the mayor actually had all the executive authority, and the commission, or the council in this case, under the new law, couldn't be the legislative branch, it would actually separate, that would require a vote of the people.
Right. And now, and that's, that's a good question you've asked about the city commission form, they've taken that out of the state code. Actually, under the city commission form, when your dad was the mayor of Salt Lake, the commissioners each had departments. It was truly like a county commission, the old city commissioner form. And each commissioner had a department, they were executors, administrators of those departments, and the mayor had his.
And they were full-time positions as well.
Full-time positions as well, very much like the county commission, but that form disappeared in 1977, or 1980, or whatever. But in your form, there are no branches of government, but the default in the state law is that, that mayor is the chief executive and chief administrative officer. Now, the mayor has the option, let's say you didn't have a city manager when you were small, like you were pre, prior to 1980. The mayor can, with the advice and consent of the council, delegate his administrative and executive powers to council members. So you go to the very small towns, and, and you still have this holdover with your liaisons and that, and council members are assigned departments. But it's a delegation by the mayor to the council, you could still do that.
And in fact, this is bordering on the ridiculous, but if we wanted the, the council to have all the executive authority, we could actually also be the officers, right? We could do all the work of the city, run the snowplows and, right?
I, I defended the mayor of Paradise once, because he crashed somebody, he wrecked the snowplow. Ran into somebody. They still, if you get small enough, you're still plowing the streets. I mean, that's what the mayor of Paradise does, drive the snowplow.
For the record, I have no interest in driving a snowplow, so if we can just get that out.
You're a CDL, you don't want me.
Your real question right now, in, in response to, to Councilmember Lee and Adams is, does the mayor want to have the, the power of appointment of, of department heads back in his slate?
And not down to a, a micro level, more macro.
Then he just needs three of you to vote yes, and we'll amend that out of the ordinance before the new manager comes. And if the mayor doesn't, then the question is, do five of you want to, to take it from that manager's position and give it, either force it on the mayor, or give it to yourselves as a group? Because that, department heads, appointment of department heads, removal and, and, and appointment is seen as traditionally an executive power. The legislative power is the power to make policy, the executive power is the power to carry it out and appoint those who carry it out.
Is that why the legislature, why they took out that form of government, so that?
Now, the city manager form was taken out, I don't know why. It was put in, by the way, for people, by people who think the government ought to be run more like business. It's intended to mimic the corporate system. Elected board of directors, hired CEO. The idea was that cities are, are business corporations, service corporations, they, they sell water, they sell power, they sell electricity, they ought to be run like a corporation. And how are corporations run? You don't have shareholders vote for the president, you have shareholders vote for the board of directors. Board of directors hires the president. But it become out of favor in Utah with the Utah legislature, so they took that out.
So, and one more technical question, so we're grand, is it, is it the ordinance of Kaysville regarding city manager and city council duties, all that, that is grandfathered in? In other words, are, we would still be subject to 3B, Part 3, that talks about a six-member form of, I mean, we're still subject.
Form of government with an ordinance that creates a city manager.
And so we're subject to that ordinance, and even though our language may be grandfathered in, we're subject to that Part 3 of, of Chapter 3B, Title 10, right?
Yeah, any part that refers to six-member council, power of mayors in the six-member council form, it says, A, first power, the chief executive officer of the municipality to whom all employees of the municipality report. That's number one on the list, but then you get down to the bottom that says, the powers and duties in subsection 1 are subject to municipal ordinances in effect on May 4th, 2008. Unless, and then it gives you the unless, how to get out of it. So, and then when you go over to the council's powers, it says, you have the power to pass ordinances that affect the mayor's powers, but it's subject to the mayor's consent or unanimous council. Now, there is a bill in front of the state legislature, by the way, being run by somebody on behalf of a council member for Lehigh, that would change that unanimous to a free force, but I don't, I don't think it's moving.
It's on hold.
Yeah.
So I guess the, the question I have as well, so in reality, you know, we talk about the strong mayor form of government. You know, in reality, this, this form of government, the, the mayor can have all that power anyway. The only difference is you don't have the veto power, which would be an absolute nightmare, oh my goodness. The mayor would be, he'd be the dictator of the city.
I know, I don't think he would be.
Not our mayor, but, you know. I, I guess the whole point of it is, is we really have a choice as a city council. You know, let's assume for a minute that we had the votes on whatever way that we wanted to do that. We really have a choice to be able to do it and present it in any way we want. In, in the aspect that if, if we decided, well, right now, the city manager has too much power, we'd like to get more transparency and more power back in the city council and the mayor's pocket. In, in reality, we could, I mean, we don't have to have either or, we could have a combination of both.
Yeah, you can, you have, in your form, have the ability to design it any way you want. Now, I can tell you from my experience, the public thinks the mayor already has his power.
Specific to Kaysville, or you're speaking generally?
I'm speaking generally and in Kaysville. If you ask the man on the street, who's, who runs the city, they'll say, well, the mayor runs the city.
Poor guy, take the brunt of everything.
I was going to say, maybe not here anymore.
Could I ask one more question? I mean, certainly there's a process for removing an ordinance, and my thought is that if you remove that one section that says non-interference, that, that, that would be similar to other cities. So in other words, they don't specify much different than Kaysville in, in many ways, as far as duties of a city manager, those cities that have a city. You, you could probably remove that one section of code and go through that process. But let me ask this, so, because personally, I mean, just my first reaction is that you'd have to pay me a lot more to run the city on a day-to-day basis than I'm currently getting paid.
I didn't know state employees were paid that much.
Yeah, they're, they're, I was thinking, I was speaking of the council, the council fee. But as far as policymaking and being able to influence, I mean, the idea of a board, right, if we follow this, I realize it's fallen out of favor with the legislature now, but if you go to the idea of a board, they absolutely, absolutely have absolute power to do anything they want to represent the owners, whether it's a public company or whatever, in this case, to represent the citizens of Kaysville. They can set strategy, policy, they can get as involved as they would like to get, from the standpoint of policy objectives, goals, that sort of thing that they want to communicate to the city manager already, right?
Exactly. And, and let me just say, and this is why I was a little confused when I was told that this was on the, on the agenda, and it dealt with department heads. Your ordinance was done to take power away from a mayor, whether anybody remembers it or not. It was to give power to a council, because who hires and fires the manager? The council. It's not a mayor appointment. The compromise in the legislature was, the mayor got a vote on that issue. But it's not an appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent, and I believe your ordinance says, the council will hire, if I remember right. You see, and so, so to Councilman Adams' point, somebody at some time took the power over department heads away from the mayor, and effectively gave it to the council, because if the council doesn't like what the city manager's doing, they get, they don't have to wait for the next election, they get to fire the city manager. And, and that's, that's one of the reasons why yours is a more aggressive ordinance, it took that power, you know, it says it's in the city manager, but it's in effect in your hands. So you hire the new city manager, and you, and a majority of the council says to that city manager, by the way, clean up, clean up your departments, we don't like the way it's run. That's a lot different. That's a lot different than, than a majority of the council telling the mayor, clean it up, because the mayor might say, no, vote me out.
Just a question, so is it fair to say then that that move actually is more responsive to the people in the community because they have all five of their representatives to represent them in the, as a governing body in the executive branch than a strong mayor form would be, which takes power to one, one person?
Yeah, you, you see, and what the legislature did was they gave the mayor a vote on who to hire, on whether to fire the council, that was the compromise, because before then, managers, mayors were saying, I can't even get the manager to respond to me, they are only responding to the council, because all they need is three votes to keep their job. So now, the mayor gets a vote, so, so they need four votes, or, or might be a three-three tie, but, but in effect, your ordinance empowers, empowers council members, the way it's written.
So educate me, Dave, so, the intent, I guess coming from me, my intent is not to shift the city to a strong mayor form of government right, right now. Sorry if I implicated that, I mean, because then we're grandfathered out, there's no going back, right?
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't think so, right, right, you, there's no council member that I know in the five and six-member council form of governments that are, that want to shift to the strong mayor council form of government. That makes you a legislator only, takes all the fun out of it.
The only, yeah, and all I'm saying is, and you can help me with the wording of it, is, you know, how do we spread that load across an equal team? How do we...
When you hire, when you hire your manager, you express to them that managers, our ordinance says that you're in charge of these department heads, and we expect you to consult with us on how that's done.
And we can have a clause in there, I mean, kind of like council member Page was talking about, maybe a hybrid between all the ideas, we could have a clause in there that, like an override clause, so he's aware, you know, here's, here's what I'm getting at, Dave, and, and, I'm not the most up to snuff with all this stuff, but what I'm up to snuff with, and what I want the people listening at home to realize I'm up to snuff with, is that I'm up to snuff with how this, this city feels, I feel I am, with, with a portion anyways, with, with a degree of their heartbeat, and, and how they feel, and how they felt, and where they would like to see the city go. And for me, that's what's important, I mean, I'm, we could, I know I instituted this partially, but I, we could, we could hash out the finer details all night, but I think it's important to remember, did anybody sense any kind of a degree of movement last year along the campaign trail? Did we not smash voting records, obliterate them, across the whole country, or county, we were the lead? I can't deny that, above all my thresholds of pain for trying to be, you know, cordial to, to my fellow man and woman, I can't deny that. And that's what I'm trying to do tonight, I'm trying to listen to the heartbeat and the voice of the people. I'm not trying to put it on one man's shoulders. Do I trust that Mayor Hyatt would, would be good with that? Yeah, I think he'd be a balance of power. Now, we have to think future mayors, but I like the idea of spreading across this whole panel, and the manager, I'm fine with the manager being included, but right now, it just seems, you know, I think people would like to know that their elected officials, if they come to them, I mean, we, we heard cries tonight, hey, can you converse back and forth with us? I think people would like to know if they come to their elected official, that their elected official has a little bit, hey, you know what, I'm gonna look into that, you know, and I think people are ready for that around here, I honestly do, I, I affirmatively believe that, you know, I'm convicted of that, I have a conviction of that, I should say. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, and that's what I feel like, even all these good council members up here, all of us, you know, we all know the heartbeat of the city, no one can deny there was, there's a movement, and, and that movement is bigger than, than anybody could, could ever imagine, and it's, it's just, I think it's just time rolling on. So I think, you know, if, Dave, if there's some way you could help bring all these thoughts together, and recommend a, a way to do this, to where we just spread that power out, just, that's it, kind of, I think, what I'm trying to get at.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the, to that point, to the answer to that question from what you've said already, Dave, is that, I mean, the power's in our hands right now.
I'm just, I'm just recommending, suggesting.
You have an unelected hired chief administrative officer who reports to, whose loyalty is to the council as a whole, and, and isn't just a mayor's administrative assistant, and you don't have to wait till the mayor's election to make the change.
But that's just with one position, though, and so if the council felt indifferent with another position throughout the city, the council stonewalled out of that and stuck.
Well, no, no, because you controlled the manager, and you've given the manager the power over your department heads.
Seems a little contrary to what I've witnessed.
But wording in ours says that we're not to interfere.
You're not to go around your manager, the way, the way it is. You see, and that's, that's why I'm, I, I have a little disconnect with the position you're taking is, is...
What if you don't want to fire your manager? I, I mean, just kind of bluntly, like, theoretically speaking, what if that's not your desire?
Well, and, and this is, and this is the problem that I see, and I'm not saying that it's your problem, I just want you to avoid it, and so that it doesn't become your individual problem. There's a problem with, with, with all, most of the cities in, in the state have your form of government, whether it's the five or six member.
With different variations.
Yeah, the big problem is, a council member, an individual council member is given one thing by the voters, that's his or her right to vote as a member of the council, it's not been given anything else. Any other power that you have is power exercised as a council with a majority from a quorum. So no voter gave, for example, you a mandate as an individual to, to handle the Parks Department. They gave you the right to vote on the policies on how the Parks Department should be done. Now, when mayors run, they run as, they, they have an individual bunch of powers, at least the public thinks, and that's what I said. Now, your mayor has some individual powers, your chair and some other things, but your system has taken those mayor's individual powers and delegated them to a hired, paid professional that is responsible to answer to you as a council. And so it is, it, it's as strong as possible position as you could get, short of dividing the city into departments and appointing yourselves department heads, the commission form. And you theoretically could go that far, but I, I really think that, you know, what, you said, a thirty-five million dollar budget, you guys are all part-time, I really think that, that you're beyond that in size, unless you want to make full-time commissioners and...
Dave, I've met you twice now, and I respect the, the living daylights out of you, I truly mean that, so I, in your opinion, in your experience, over the years, which is immense, how do you, how do you feel about, you know, the productivity and the actions and the, and the behavior of department heads when they're beholden to an elected official versus that scenario of, you know, when they're beholden to an appointed official? You feel like...
I, I, I don't think, I, I don't think there's any difference with the department heads, I think that, I, I think that you're...
Or how do, how do the citizens feel about that, then? You know, do you find that citizenry appreciates? Go ahead, Jay.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I think there, there is one, you know, if you look in three B, the new form of government, it talks about the councils, I mean, it's really kind of impressive how much the, the, as you said, as a governing body as a whole, not as an individual, but as a governing body, how much power the council has, and one of the things they can do, if there's anything in a division or in the city that they feel might be troubling, they can form a committee.
They can investigate, they can call them in, they can do all that. You see, as a council, and that's the key, the frustrate, and that's why I say, the frustration that individual council members have around the state is usually when they're one or two in a minority on a council, and the majority doesn't want to do it. That's where the, the big frustration goes, it comes from, and that's what you want to avoid, you want to work from a majority, you want to reach a consensus before you, before you work, and that's why I ask, is, we can, we can help you get, design this any way you want, up to and including, completely rewriting your city manager ordinance, if you've got a majority who, that wants to do that, and, in that case, and the mayor's consent, or a unanimous council. If there's only one or two of you that want to do it, my advice is that you wait till you see who your new city manager is, and meet him, and then see how well he's gonna work with you on your issues that you've got, or she works with you on your issues that you've got, and maybe then you look at the ordinance again.
So, just wrapping my mind around, theoretically, if we had an animal control department, and we had a head of that department, right, and all five of these members and six of these members up here are constantly getting emails, phone calls, you know, about, hey, you know, why don't you do something about this, you know, you see my point here, then how does this council then in turn take action upon that without saying, see you do, to, to the manager? So how do we...
You'd call the city manager, and you'd say, take care of that for me.
Well, what if you're met with a roadblock?
Well, then you'd call the city manager.
Out of the box thinking here, and theoretically, how do you...
You'd call the city manager, and you'd say, take care of that, or else go find a new job.
Okay. Or, or alternatively, we, we get that department head in here to present before the council, and we do an investigation, we do a, you know, interrogation, or whatever you want to call it, and try to figure out what's going on and what improvements we can get from that individual department.
The only thing your ordinance says you can't do is that, as an individual, without the city manager's permission, you'd go around the city manager and go to this, go to the employees in the department head and give them instructions.
So, so maybe you can help me if I'm, if I'm grasping this the right way, I, I've heard, especially this last maybe twelve months, that comment often, that, that the city manager has too much power, and the council needs to be in charge, and the council is not in charge. I, I haven't experienced that, and I, and I can only speak from my time, I've, I've, I have yet, I've had several disagreements with, I don't want to call them disagreements, but John and I have not seen eye to eye on several things over the past eight years. I can honestly say I have never felt, though, that something that, that I, that I wanted to see happen, or the council wanted to see happen, was, was met with, no, forget about it. But going back to that, that statement of, of the council has, or the city manager has too much power and the council is powerless, I understand you to say that, based on your assessment, just the opposite is the case, that with, without knowingly realizing it, that, that the way our, we have been set up, the council has more power than they would in a typical situation to control the city.
If you didn't have the ordinance, the council would be less, have less power on the administration of the city than you have with your ordinance. Now, I represent a city that's smaller than yours, it's very similar in North Utah County, Alpine City, they have an ordinance, a, a simple city administrator ordinance, and it says, city administrator reports to the mayor, you know, it gives the thing, and that city administrator, you know, the council, the mayor's running the show, you know, the council has a frustration, because city administrator reports to the mayor, and the mayor appoints with advice and consent of the council, and, and that's another way of doing it, but that's, but, but that council, it, it would, it, it would appear, if you read their ordinance, that that council was more involved than this, you are, because their city manager ordinance, or administrative ordinance there is, is so sparse, and doesn't have those limitations you have, but in actuality, because the mayor appoints the city administrator with advice and consent of the council, and the mayor can get rid of them if they want to, the council is, has less influence on the day-to-day, if you go that way, even though it appears differently when you look at the paper, or the paperwork.
I'll just, just a quick paragraph here, and I'm gonna leave the, the position out, just so nobody thinks I'm polarizing. Appointment, the mayor shall, and this is coming from Farmington, the mayor shall, with the advice and consent of the city council, appoint a qualified person to the such-and-such office. Pursuant to section three dash zero one dash zero eight zero, the city manager may provide written recommendation to the mayor and city council regarding the appointment or dismissal of the fire chief. The fire chief is a...
You were gonna leave that out?
Well, yep.
See what you did?
Getting late. Chief, it's nothing, dude, just landed on it, could've picked Dean, but anyway, he's staring me down, so, anyway, is an at-will, this position is an at-will position, and is exempt from the protections of Utah Code ten dash three dash eleven zero five, as amended. As such, this position may be terminated with or without cause, and shall not be entitled to due process appeal procedures as set forth in the Utah State Code. So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just a man of accountability, I just feel like this keeps people accountable, I'm not, you know, and it spreads it across enough people that not one guy can come and...
I just want to point out to you there, though, that that ordinance empowers, gives more power to your mayor, less power to that manager, it doesn't give you any more power on council members.
Unless we design it, right?
Right, but I'm just saying, the one you've just read there, said the mayor will appoint with the advice and consent of the council.
So we could design it differently, and, gotcha.
Yeah.
But, but if you like that, that approach, all that means is you're taking it from the person who owes their job to you, and giving it to the person who gets to wait to the next election, where you could do anything about it.
So, can I move to, to make a vote on this, that, you know, I don't know necessarily we have to vote on the actual method tonight, can I move to, to make a vote upon this discussion of the revised ordinance of Caseville City, City Code, that at a further date, we will discuss, you know, just for the sake and benefit of the new manager to clearly understand where he sits, and for the sake, more ultimately, for the sake and benefit of the citizens of Caseville, to, to have their input, and clearly state, this is the government we want, because ultimately, we're here for them, you know, and, and that's the end of the road, you know, and if, if that's a big no from the city, boy, I've just wasted an hour of your time, and I sincerely apologize. So, I don't know how to word that, Mayor, maybe you can help me out.
Do we need a motion on that?
I guess it depends if it's, if it's a, a poll of the council to kind of say, are you willing to, to discuss this further? You know, I don't, I don't know that, that an official motion is, is appropriate for that consensus, I, I think this would be fine to discuss, and, again, now, as I'm thinking about everything we're gonna discuss, we're gonna have like a fifteen-hour work session.
That's the problem with God.
Which might not, which might not work, but if this is something that the council wants to discuss in, in, in more detail, then I think we could get some, some general, some, from general commitment. In order to change, so, Mr. Church, maybe you can just clarify this for us, if we wanted to change our ordinance as it's currently written to, I don't even wanna say what it is, but just to some, something other than it's currently written, what does that process look like in regards, do we take our ordinance and red-line it and cross it out, do we make that publicly available, how, is there a public hearing required?
No public hearings required on this, but a public meeting would be required, and you may want to hold a public hearing if you want to, but it's not required.
We'd turn that back toward you again, sorry.
But, but what you'd, obviously, somebody would have to draft up a proposed amendment to the ordinance, and, and you'd get on, get it on an agenda to discuss, and see how far it goes, and, and depending on what the amendment is, as I say, that would depend on who has the right to vote on it, and what the minimum vote necessary is to pass it. So, for example, if you had an amendment that said, we were gonna change it from the manager appointing department heads to the mayor appointing department heads, that's an increase in mayor's power under your current one, and would require the mayor's consent to assume that new power, or, or else a unanimous council. But, so someone first needs to decide what amendments that you want to suggest to it, and put it in some kind of proposed form, and get it on an agenda, and then we'll have a vote.
And, and maybe to council member Adams' point, if, if, and it's, maybe there's two questions there, maybe the first question is, are we willing to discuss this further? And then maybe, during that discussion, the question is asked, is there a, a general feeling from the council that some kind of amendment would be desired? Because I guess if we were just saying and saying, I want to change it so that the powers come back to the mayor, and you could, and, and two of you say, yeah, I'd be in favor, and everybody else says, I would not be in favor of that, then we wouldn't necessarily want to waste the time in, in hiring you to, to come and write that out for us if we, if we thought it wasn't, it wasn't gonna go anywhere.
Well, yeah, your question should be this, is there, the, the first question is, Mayor, do you want those powers back?
I'm not prepared to answer that right now, but...
And because if you don't, that answers to the council whether or not it takes, they're gonna need unanimity or not. Then the second question for the council is, do you, is your, are your proposed changes to move the powers back to the mayor, or are your proposed changes to move the, the power from the mayor and from the manager to council members? Because those are distinctly different kinds of, kinds of approaches.
The latter.
Yeah.
More of a balance.
Yeah, you see, and if it's that, then the question for the mayor and the rest of the council is, would you, are you willing to look at that approach of increasing council members' administrative duties? And, and that's, that ought to be an E, because if, if you want to do that, then that's an easy approach, and then it's just talking about to what extent and how you structure it.
approach, and then it's just talking about to what extent and how you structure it.
Can I take a vote on that then? That's voto?
Well, you can if you want, and then you could see if the mayor is, wants to consent to see that the council members' duties are increased, and if he doesn't, whether there's a unanimous council who...
But we can't, we cannot take a vote to change that tonight, because we don't have an ordinance written to vote on, and we also didn't have them publicly notified.
He said, consider, though.
I see, okay.
He said, consider.
Well, maybe I'll give you my perspective, and that will, that will, that might help and it might not. I am always amenable to discussion about, just about anything. I'll be the first to tell you, and this doesn't just speak to me, for the last six years that I've been mayor, I've oftentimes heard, I want to say, and I mean this, I've often heard, the city manager has too much power and the council has no say. And I have usually replied, albeit I think I got it wrong, I used to say, if the mayor was in charge and you get some, it's an E, maybe I don't want to be quoted on this, but I used to say, it's not that hard to get an idiot elected to office. It's, and I'm not speaking of myself, I'm just saying in general, I've seen that, I've seen that around.
Just to clarify, I need to be careful.
But what I'm, my point is, is I've always said, if you get a mayor that is calling the shots and running totally rogue, and he is just totally unqualified for the job, you're stuck for four years. If you get a city manager who goes totally rogue and is not doing the will of the people, I used to say, three votes and he's gone. Turns out I was wrong, it's four votes and he's gone. But at the end of the day, you have, the power, the council has the power. But every time, I feel like on, oftentimes when I would say that, maybe it wasn't believed or realized, and usually it went back to, no, the city manager just, just, just has too much power. So, if you were asking me, would I be open to discussion, I would be less inclined, not just because of my own schedule, but I may not be here in one, two, or five, six years if I run again. I would not be inclined to support the idea of moving, and my gut tells me none of you would be inclined to the idea of having the mayor make those, those day-to-day responsibilities. I would, I'd be open to some discussion of what benefits we gain by tweaking our ordinance, but my initial reaction based on Mr. Church's comments tonight is that, not to be the one to burst the bubble, but even though the perception has not been the case, the way that we are set out, turns out, the council actually has quite a bit of control over the city manager's day-to-day. And I had this conversation with someone recently who called me, and I said, at the end of the day, you can blame the city manager for that if you want, but in the eight years that I've been on the council, the city council has been okay with it. No one has made a motion or to say, we're not okay with that, and so we want to change. And I don't, I feel like that might be a little unpopular to say, but I think perhaps that perception that the city council had no, no powers was actually not, not the case. You may have just had a city council who believed that, that, that the way it's set up now is appropriate. So, the long answer to, I know I'm rambling here, but the long answer to the question is, would you be willing to have a, have a discussion? I'm always willing to have a discussion. I do like the idea that the city council has say over what the city manager is going to do, and we remove the day-to-day operations out of the political side of things, so that whether it's, whether it's, the mayor's not, hey, I'm going to make sure we take care of my biggest supporter, that it's more of a, of a balance of power. If, I like where we're at right now, if we're talking about moving those administrative duties to the city council, which would be a hybrid of what Mr. Church has said, I'm the first to say, it doesn't really matter what other cities do, we should do what's best for Kaysville. That being said, I think it's important to say, similar cities of our size, how many other cities in the state of the, how many do we have, David, 246, seven cities in the state? How many that are comparable to Kaysville have the council members running the day-to-day operations? My initial gut would tell me that's probably not a good idea. I would, I would be very hard pressed to be in support of the council running the day-to-day operations of the, of the city.
Yeah, like I say, I don't think, I don't think Dave's going there. I don't, I don't think that that's what he's asking. I mean, my understanding is, I think a lot of it is, is perception. And I, you know, my, I think what I'm hearing here is, is I don't think anybody wants the mayor to have all this power, and nobody wants the city council to have all this power. I think what we're saying is, is I think there's a desire that maybe there's some tweaking that goes about to allow maybe the city council to have a little bit more say on, on some of the decisions, not, not the day-to-day operations or anything like that, because I agree with the mayor, I mean, and everyone else. I mean, we're not paid to be doing that, and not only that, in a lot of ways, we're not the professionals that should be making those decisions, and that's important to understand. But on the other hand, how do the people of Kaysville feel? I mean, if they feel like they're out of the process, I mean, one thing that they understand is, if I don't like the way the guy is representing me, I can, I can fire him, I can get rid of him. And, and I think that that's the concern that they might have, if they don't like the way that, for example, the city's running, they don't have a lot of say if the city council has no ability at all in that aspect. And I can tell you, it is, it's extremely hard, there's very few cities that can remove, you know, a city manager, even though we have that power, it's still, you know, you still have to have four of the six votes, which is extremely hard on any decision unless it's so blatant that everybody understands it. So, I think it'd be worth having that discussion.
And I, and could I just, and you've said two things that, that I think were important. I think, you said, I think a lot of it is perception, and all I guess I'm saying is, if the general feeling is, the perception is, the council has no power and authority right now, and that is simply not the case, it wouldn't seem prudent, in my view, to change and or to go through the motion of tweaking something just so we can say, hey, look, we changed something, when in reality, we're not changing the underlying, we're, we have more, the council has more power than might be perceived by, by many. So, all I'm saying is, is I wouldn't recommend going through the motion and just tweaking something so we can say, hey, we made a change, when in reality, the perception has been inaccurate, or maybe misperceived, if that makes sense.
But I think there's some underlying truth to the perception, and whether it be because previous councils have been lazy, or just not wanting to take the time to be more involved, I don't know. But, but with that, I think that it's worth the discussion.
I don't certainly have any issue with, with having a discussion about it. I will tell you right now, I mean, we wouldn't have a unanimous council to make, you know, tweaks or even a wholesale overhaul of our ordinance at this point, because I would not vote for that, not because I'm not willing to take more responsibility, and not because I, I wouldn't want the mayor to have more responsibility or whatever. I, I think it's, it's important for us to recognize, and, you know, after enough time on the council, and Susan, you've been on the council long enough for this too, you start to realize that there's always a trade-off, and there's almost always an unintended consequence. So, if we make a tweak, or if we make some kind of adjustment to how we want, you know, how we decide to alter the structure of power in Kaysville, we may find, after having done that, that we actually have less power, as I think is one of the points that Mr. Church has brought up, we actually have less say or less power to make any change, because as a, as a governing body, we've eliminated that. Not intended to do that, but that we have done that nonetheless, and I think it's, it's important. I'm open to discussions, I'm open to talk about it to the extent we need to, but I think we need to very, be very cognizant of the fact that just making a change for change's sake may introduce further complications or more unintended consequences than we really recognize.
Well, and that's perhaps a perception issue right there, not meant offensively, Chris, that there's, it's not just to make change for change's sake, you know, and I mean, I'm, I'm a kind of a guy, you know, I just try and get things done, but, I mean, we can always, like Jake said earlier, he implied that we could always turn it back the clock, you know, if we found that it didn't work. So, I guess, I feel there's protection in masses, I feel there's a level of protection on broader set of shoulders, and there's more brains to be empowered to decide, is this really just somebody, you know, thinking something that's perception, or does the whole council feel this way generally? And I'd like the council to be able to act on that, if ever the event was needed, before this new manager comes in, so he clearly understands things. So, David, you're going to have to help me here, I would like to make a vote to override, where council can let a department go, can that be an amendment, just a specific sidebar amendment, that states, in the event that you're met with a roadblock and the whole body says, no, can we make an amendment, and can I move to make a vote, just to put an amendment in, in the code tonight?
No, not tonight.
That would allow that?
What you've got on your agenda tonight is discussion of revised ordinance of Kaysville City. To amend the ordinance, you need, you need an ordinance, and your ordinance has to be in writing in front of you at the time you consider it and vote on it. You can't, you can't...
So, because of that, no matter what, we can't do anything tonight anyway?
Well, yeah, you don't have an ordinance written.
Not just because of that, there's no ordinance for us to consider a change to.
You need the equivalent, you know, what the legislature would call a bill, we call an ordinance. You need a paper ordinance in front of you to be considered, and then you can amend it, you can write it, and you need it specifically on the agenda, so the public knows the topic and what you're doing prior to the...
I'm just going to close with this then, I just want everybody who's watching and everybody, you know, who, you know, is out there, has a desire of change, reach out to me, I'm here, I tried, I think I tried in a, in a good manner, I think I tried to spread it across more people. I'm not trying to change to a full-time mayor position, I mean, the mayor could always be impeached, there's always levels of protection that are in place in US government, you know, whether the people rise up out of apathy and do something about it or not, that's the variable. So, I think it, I think it's clear where I stand.
I know we've gone on a long time, Mayor, but with your acquiescence, I'd just like to make one more comment, that I thought, first of all, to acknowledge Councilman Adams' concern, I absolutely think that that's so important, that the, I'll tell you, one thing we do when we examine is, we make sure that a board is independent, and that they're aggressive, and that they're, they ask in-depth and challenging questions. That's one of the most important things I think we do, not checking the balance sheet, what's their solvency? What's corporate governance like? How strong is that board? And I couldn't agree more with everything Councilman Page said, and Councilman Lee, where they said, there's a perception there that maybe, and I'm not going to pass judgment on a prior council, because I wasn't here, but I do know that I agree that part of our responsibility as a council is to, to the best of our ability, to make sure that, first of all, we earn a good perception, right, that we are taking every issue into consideration, and that we are in control, that we are not just a rubber-stamp council, but that we are really concerned about all these issues. And I think if, even if nothing changes with the ordinance, we have that ability as a council, some of us knew, to make sure that we change that perception, and that we make it clear in our words, in the public meetings, and in everything we do, that we are taking action, that we are aware of what's going on in the city, and that if we have concerns, we will investigate them. And we will, and we will demand accountability from the city manager, and the professionals who run the city, as much as we, because I appreciate every day what they do, because it's such essential services, even like parks, and I don't want to go on too long, but, you know, you might ask, are parks are essential, but I think that part of our lives, that recreation, being able to take our children, that, you know, all of that is just essential to a community. But we have to make sure that it's done responsibly, that, you know, that we have concerns for the taxpayers and all of those things. We need to clearly have that two-way communication to the best of our ability, using new, new ideas, you know, whether we have even more committees, that we have strategic planning sessions, or where we involve the public in a portion of the budget, all of those things to help the perception, but also, we need to be strong and make it clear that we are taking our responsibility seriously, and that we're not rubber-stamping everything the city manager does. And I, I think I, my vote would be to start there, you know, to put the responsibility and accountability back on us, to do what the people elected us to do.
Well, my, my comments weren't meant to say that that is the case with previous city councils, it was just trying to get the feel for why people have that perception.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify, I know I said I'm done. Katie, sorry if this is the well. So, discussion of the revised ordinances of Kaysville City, so what are we actually talking about here tonight then, under this umbrella? We're talking about when they were revised in 1980?
No, the, the ordinances are called, the revised ordinances of Kaysville City. So, if you're referring to City Code, that's the title.
Revised doesn't imply anything.
That's right.
Well, they're not the original, they've been revised over time, and that's what they...
But if you open the code book, it is, this is the revised ordinances of Kaysville City.
Is there any way, just to satisfy the discussion, to bring it up in our work meeting and have some more discussion on this, and if, if there's still no change of feelings about this, then we'll just let it die? Is that okay?
I certainly don't have a problem personally discussing it.
Not at all. I think everybody's in favor of that.
And what might help for that, and, and I feel like, and Mr. Church used the legislature and a bill as, as an example, that might be more valuable, because it's, it's one thing to say, how do you feel about this in concept? It's another thing to see it written out in ordinance form. And so, if there was an additional discussion, and that puts a lot of work on somebody, but if there was to be a discussion specifically, Councilmember Adams talked about department heads or firing a department head, if that was something that wanted to be, then, then bringing that in a, in a redlined version or ordinance form would be a good starting point. I think sometimes when we talk about intent, and then we talk about how it's written, maybe look like two different things. So, if, as a suggestion, if Councilmember Adams or Councilmember Lee who want, maybe want to either draft or come up with some tweak language, we don't have to, we can just discuss, but I think my gut tells me we'll be back at the same, we'll be back at the same place to say, well, what does that look like on paper? And then we'll probably table it again and postpone it again, because we'll say, well, we don't have anything that we're, we're working from.
Right, but it's a starting point and discussion.
We need to put that into words, or are we done?
No, we'll just add it to the...
No, I don't, I don't think so, yeah. We'll, we'll, if we look at our calendar, our work session is scheduled for February 20th, today is the 4th. We're going to prepare that agenda on February 12th, at the latest, would be a week before, especially since the 15th, President's Day. So, we'll prepare what that agenda looked like. So, if the council has, we usually will do some broad agenda items like budgetary priorities. So, for example, if the council says, hey, with our B and C road funds, Dean, how much do you think we're going to have left? All right, we, come heck or high water, we want to repave Sunset Drive, for example, or, or...
Yes, we do.
Or something like that.
Second that motion.
That's a priority, would you please pursue that? Or, we want to install eight pickleball courts at Barnes Park. That is a clear priority for the city council, start, start looking at a budget, or, I think, so part of, part of it's going to be budget, just what you'd like to see as priorities. We're not going to have the answers to all of them, they may come back and say, well, pickleball courts is $3 million, and we have $70,000 to do it, and that might, that might answer it for us. But I think the staff needs to know what the priorities of the council. Second thing would be just general operations, we usually touch a little bit on that, but the remaining items, I think if you can submit to us by one week from tonight... one week from tonight, this is something I would like to see discussed in our work session, then we'll appropriate a certain amount of time to have that discussion. But if it's more than just a discussion item like that, I think we probably would need to have a draft to work from, and I wouldn't even suggest that passing it on a Saturday work session would be a good idea, either, because the majority of the public are gonna say, hey, I wanna know. So I would think that you're, that we would have a similar agenda item, discussion of the revised ordinances, but something a little more wordy, or something to actually run with.
Something proposed in writing?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
An ordinance, as Mr. Church mentioned, in ordinance form, is what I think would be required. And at least that gives us, so you say, here's what I'm trying to accomplish, and here's how we've changed the wording, and then we can say, okay, yeah, I can see what you're trying to accomplish. The downside to that is it's cart before the horse a little bit, because you may go to the time and effort to prepare a bill, and find out that you have no support, and be like, well, why didn't you tell me I have absolutely no support? On the flip side, I don't know that you're gonna get support unless people know what it is exactly that's being proposed. So it's kind of a...
Well, I think it's important that we go through it, so Dave and I are willing to put something together.
I'm just gonna step up to the plate for strike three, and then I'm heading to the dugout, I promise. But, let me apologize for any confusion that I may, you know, have put out there. This wasn't the, somewhere through mistranslation, is all I'm saying, is, it was, it was, it was meant to say restoration of the city codes back to the state code level. That's what the verbiage, maybe that will help understand where I was coming from. So, last hour of your life, you're never getting it back. Sorry.
In fairness to Councilmember Adams, his request was to have the agenda item be restoration of the Kaysville City ordinances back to state code. When I prepared the agenda, part of the reason why I didn't word it exactly that way, because I'm not sure that a restoration is, is an accurate action, if that makes sense, because a full restoration would be what we just heard the presentation on tonight, and that would be moving back to a strong mayor, formal government. If we were to doing a true restoration, and so I tried to tweak the explanation to hopefully capture what I knew you were trying to discuss, but not have it be a misleading item, statement, if that makes sense.
Gotcha.
All right, so I don't think we need any action, knowing that we're gonna discuss this. Please notate in your calendars, council, by one week from tonight, if you could please tell us what your priorities are to discuss in our work session. We'll prepare the agenda to, if there are some key items, we gotta make sure we talk about this, this, and this. We're gonna have a couple that we want you to talk about, but let us know those, and...
So by the 11th?
By the 11th, or the 10th, depending on which calendar you're looking at.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion of city vehicle use and labeling. This item was asked to be put on the agenda, previously by Councilmember Adams, and was tabled at our last meeting, and so we turned the time to him to address the council on this issue.
Summarize it. I'm just gonna get down to the nutshell of it. I feel like there's a lot of city vehicles that are not labeled. There's no logos on them. I feel like that could be improved. So, I just think we could have logos on both doors. Surrounding cities, you know, are pretty prevalent on what vehicles are what, you know, and there's a lot of vehicles that have nothing. There's a lot that have like a three-by-three logo, and, you know, due to, I guess, you know, the direction things seem to be going, the other half of this discussion could maybe be put forth in the work session. But I really think like, I think logos is something that could be done quickly, effectively, and, you know, we present ourselves better as a city with that, and perhaps it might help deter somebody when, you know, like, you know, keeping your doors locked at home keeps the honest honest. Maybe it will deter someone for using it for a purpose that they weren't necessarily intended to use it for. So, and to give a nutshell idea, as far as who I think should use a vehicle, getting into that, like I said, I wouldn't, but just people who are on call, I think they should take a vehicle home. Police officers, take a vehicle home, absolutely, you know, and then, you know, various others, but I think there's just ways that we could help trim back, you know, and we could help support those scouts that were here two weeks ago, if we look what we can live without. Not, and I wanna clarify, 'cause I didn't get a chance earlier, there's a perception running around the city right now, that members of this council have a desire to reduce people's end pay by 20 percent. I just wanna put that to rest, you know, that's, I've never heard a council member utter that. Has anyone ever heard anyone utter that?
I've never heard...
I've never heard that utter.
Never even had that thought.
Yeah, never, I haven't heard it any, ever. So, I just wanna put that to rest, you know, and help, you know, we got a lot of hard-working employees, it's, anyway. So the vehicles, yeah, I feel like, you know, in the work session, maybe we could discuss that. I don't wanna cut off any commentary, but the logos, I wanna let you know, I anticipate I'm moving that to a vote tonight.
Just something that I wanted to add is, I just recently found out there's actually no policies or procedures on vehicles, city vehicles. There's no, there's nothing. So I don't know what kind of guidance we wanna go on for here, but I think we should put together an actual procedures manual for the vehicles in the city. There's no smoking procedures right now. If somebody wanted to smoke in a vehicle, they could, 'cause there's just, there's no procedure. And there's just too many vehicles the city owns right now not to have something in place, uniform in place, and have the city employees abide by it. And so I would like to say, as a starting point, I did go and look at the state's policies and procedures, maybe go off of that to give us kind of a guidance, and then we can tweak it to fit the city's needs, but there's a lot of good things that they already have in place, that I think can be beneficial for the city. And so, maybe we can do that at the work meeting.
In years past, I worked for a company that had fleet vehicles, and, I mean, we had to sign, I mean, there was a lot of paperwork that was involved in that. We had to sign what our use was, and estimate our use at the beginning of the year for tax purposes, and at the end of the year, maybe we don't have the same kinds of requirements, since, you know, we're a public entity rather than a private company. But, I mean, there were also, there was a policy, a written policy on, that each employee had to sign who had a fleet vehicle, on use of that, that they committed, that they wouldn't drive under the influence, not that any of our employees would do that, but they had to sign away, you know, and formalize that in writing, that they would not behave in such, in certain ways, using company vehicles, company-owned property. Is that, is there anything that employees who use city fleet vehicles, Dean, have to sign at this point, in terms of their use of the vehicles?
Yeah, we need to get a guideline in place, and have city employees that drive and sign it.
It probably makes, how many vehicles do we have?
About 128 vehicles.
128 vehicles?
Including all...
Well, that's all, the snowplows, and...
Snowplows, stump trucks.
Street sweepers, and all that kinda stuff.
What might, what might make sense, then, because I actually agree with everything that's been said. I've kinda made a little line in my paper here with labeling and use, and so, we're talking about the use, but in preparation for our work session, since we talked about having a bill or something to work off of, I think we could, I think you could, someone could make a motion to inform staff to create and prepare a draft vehicle use policy for review and discussion at our work session on the 20th. At Councilmember Lee's...
I'll make that motion right now.
At Councilmember Lee's...
I'll second it.
I think, a motion and a second, and then I'll finish what I was saying. At...
You should've said motion.
At Councilmember Lee's suggestion, it sounds like the state has a generic policy that could probably be very applicable to the city. So, not to tell you exactly how to put it together, but if we had a draft document, and then we could get into the nitty-gritties, we review that and say, you know, I'm not really sure this is applicable, or I'm sure that is applicable, but if you had a beginning draft policy that we could discuss at that work session, that would make that work session item possibly go a little smoother. And so, on the directing staff to prepare a vehicle use policy draft to have available for discussion in our work session, we have a motion and a second as outlined, and so I'll call a vote, I'll call for a vote on that item. Councilmember Snell, will you start a vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you, the voting is unanimous. Going back to the labeling issue that Councilmember Adams has mentioned, I actually happen to wholeheartedly agree with him that any city vehicle should be not only labeled, but appropriately labeled, and in my mind, an appropriately labeled vehicle, not to pick on our favorite Parks Department here, but would be Parks Department vehicles that have large, I'm guessing 18 by 24 logos on both doors. Okay, well, it feels big when I'm...
We're 10-inch squares.
10-inch squares, and also on the back tailgate as well. So, the vehicles are very well. The only vehicles that I, that I would think shouldn't fall under that criteria are undercover police vehicles, but most of those don't have exempt license plates. We only have a few, but they have regular plates that look like every other vehicle. Those would probably qualify to not be labeled for certain undercover purposes. But I think it's a really great rule to say, if it has an EX license plate, we need to label the heck out of it, just so that there's, there's not any confusion. It's actually a question that we brought up as a city council a couple of years ago, and I think it was addressed pretty good at the time, and then I think we've had some circulation of vehicles, and then it's probably faltered a bit. So I'm not sure if, well, I'm not sure if we can, we can take a vote, or we could, you could make a similar motion, that perhaps this vehicle use, maybe it's, maybe it's referred to as a city vehicle use and labeling policy, and it gives some specific guidelines to what vehicles, and perhaps we ask them to do the same thing, because I agree, any city vehicle needs to be labeled, and maybe you could, I mean, we could, we could say it has to be labeled, but knowing what specifics, like a minimum of a 10-inch by 10-inch, depending on department, or maybe the policy says, you know, does it say Kaysville Parks and Recreation? Does it say Kaysville Public Works? Does it, if it's a larger vehicle, does it take up a percentage? So if we're talking about a power truck, do we want it to be 10-inch by 10-inch, or do we want it to be 15 by 15? And so, short of requiring that now, I think, I would recommend that we give similar direction, and maybe even amend the original motion, to say that we, the staff bring, knowing what we're talking about tonight, a vehicle use, and either a separate labeling policy, or call it a city vehicle use policy that includes labeling.
Yeah, and I also think it's important, if we're gonna do all this, that we also make sure that somebody in the city, that's already working for the city, has the duties of fleet manager, that they oversee that these things are held to and whatnot.
I think as you're preparing that policy, staff, that would be, maybe the policy includes designating a fleet manager, so someone who, rather it be the city manager, the mayor, the council wants to discuss or talk with, you can, we can, it can be very clear who the responsible party, I think, sort of by default, Dean is kind of our fleet manager anyway, but now we really wanna hold you accountable for it, so.
Six jobs, right?
I mean, for maintenance and service.
Would you have, would you have concerns if the fleet manager were department-specific?
I just thought of that. That's a great idea. Bear it down on them, right? Each department has its own fleet manager, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, that's how we do it now.
Or each department has its own department manager?
My department's responsible for the maintenance, for the licensing, the registration, the insurance, and then we filter down to the department level, and they're responsible for the use of the vehicle. They determine the appropriate use.
The only, I think, thing that we're probably getting at here is that if it's down to the individual department, that's fine, but that department needs to know that these are the guidelines, the...
As long as they adhere to what...
City vehicle use guidelines that I must adhere by, and so, I think, I don't speak for anybody else, but I think that's probably a fine idea, so long as there's a uniform code that everybody's following.
Yeah.
I wasn't referring to the police department at all. I think that's one that's exempt from this conversation, you know, like Mayor brought up with, you know, undercover.
Well, that's a part of it.
So I, that's...
If they're not exempt plates, they're exempt.
Well, sorry, I mean, I mean, they were not included in my thought process in this, for very obvious public safety reasons. So it's not, but like fire, you know, we got some pretty awesome trucks over there. There's a beautiful candy apple red truck that nobody, if you saw it going down the road, you'd have no idea what it was. Get that gold leaf stuff on there, Kaysville Fire, man, KFD, let's, let's do it, so.
All right.
I have noticed that that's interesting. Sometimes you got a little black-and-white city logo on kinda the front panel, whereas you got a colored logo, your Parks and Rec...
They're undercover, too. Don't ask.
We probably have a couple that I've observed with exempt plates that I haven't, I haven't seen any logo on, and that, I think the small ones are not acceptable, but I think no logo is completely unacceptable, in my mind. I'm not sure we need a motion for the labeling portion of it, because I think the guidance is pretty clear. I think we could probably just do it, just call that good, but we will plan on looking, we would look forward to reviewing a comprehensive, and recognizing that we have a week from tomorrow before we do that agenda, and that that policy may not be able to be completed by then. We would like to distribute the policy prior to the work session. So even if it's not ready by the 12th, having it at least two or three days, so the council has a chance to be familiar with it, and come prepared to ask questions, instead of trying to read it on the fly, would probably be most efficient.
Useful.
All right, good discussion there. Any further items for that, for number eight? Seeing none, councilmember reports. So, not to put anyone on the spot, but this is the first meeting of the month, so we'll give you all a pass, but ideally, you're coming with something to report about your department, as we go across the table.
So this is just more of an update than anything else on Youth City Council. We were able to get Rob Bishop to come on March 11th, so we wanna try and schedule a meeting with Youth City. Chris and I, or Councilman...
All right.
Chris is fine.
It's getting late. Schedule a couple of meetings, at least one with the Youth City Council, to get their ideas on questions that we can ask Congressman Bishop and former Senator Garn regarding civic education, which is our theme, how to make civic education inspirational and engaging. And, you know, it's interesting, we're just one little pool here, but how important is that, to have people be more engaged in the civic process at every level of government? So we're kind of excited to have Congressman Bishop there, and former Senator Garn, and educators from all over the country, including Puerto Rico, will be there. And, follow-up item, if we, I think, in addition to Youth City Council, if we could have maybe student body, the student body elected officials from Davis High, for example, and maybe expand that out to a few more people who are interested in civic process, that, a few more young people.
Maybe even disseminate that to the student body officers at the three junior highs in town as well?
Yeah.
As well as the senior high school.
And I don't wanna take anything from anything one of you might report, but I'd just like to compliment Councilmember Garn and Councilmember Snell for their role with the Youth City Council for the first time in nearly a decade, I believe. The city, the Youth City Council attended Local Officials' Day at the state Capitol during the legislative session. Councilmember Snell and Councilmember Garn brought about six of our, had six of our, of our youth officials that attended in the mock debate over body cameras. I was most impressed and proud that one of our Youth City Council members, I don't even remember what the question was exactly, but the legislator, who's actually running a bill on body cameras, actually responded, "Now that is a really, really good question." And, you know, we kind of, and the 300 people in the room kinda stood a little taller, and said, yep, that's Kaysville for you. So our youth are really great. We had the opportunity to, things kinda just fell into place. We text Senator Adams, and he came out and gave us a tour of the Senate chambers, and then we text Representative Wilson, who came out and gave us a tour of the House chambers. We went in and met with the Speaker of the House for about 15 minutes, and then I text the Governor's Chief of Staff and said, "It's a long shot, but we'd sure love to introduce you to our kids," and they said, "Come down right now," and we were able to go in, and we walked in, they lined us up, he came in, shook hands, said some few words, took some pictures, and went back out. So the whole thing was like 120 seconds, but it was still, it was just, happened to be good timing that they were willing to see us, and...
I have to say, Mayor, you... I have to say, Mayor, you, you pulled that off, and it was amazing. For a while, I thought, you know, I guess we do have a young mayor, because he's doing all this texting on the cell phone, you know, and what's he doing, you know? But he was setting up all these meetings as we were going, so.
You mean to tell me Senator Adams knows how to text?
He knows how to text. Pretty good, I, I might add. But, but yeah, it, sometimes those things are better to make those requests last minute than to try. I don't know that we would have been able to do all that if we would have tried to plan it beforehand, but it worked out pretty good.
It was a fantastic day, and the, and the corollary to that is that we had intended to bring the youth council members home by noon or so, so they could get back to school and whatnot. They decided they wanted to stay and have the lunch and hear the keynote speakers address as well, and I think they had a great day. They, they really had fun. I think it was great, meeting the governor, and Senator Adams, and Representative Wilson, and the Speaker of the House, and then participating in that debate. But they also listened to those keynote speakers, and, and came away, I think, learning a lot. It was a great, great day.
Lyle, don't tell them I said that. Put that in the record.
I was really impressed, I was really impressed with our youth, short maybe of their comment that we're eager to get back to school. That was a little disappointing for me, but, I'm just kidding. All right. Any other council member reports?
I have one, if no one else has one. And this is last, we've, we've already made mention of it, but I have met with the Parks and Rec Department regarding the discussion that we had last meeting. Yeah, you can move one down.
Do you have enough?
I think so. Mayor, would you mind passing those around? Regarding the Parks and Rec prioritized capital project expenditures with relation to the Pioneer Park site. We get extras? Okay, you can pass one on down, and Dean and the others can read that as well. As you recall, in the discussion that we had two, two weeks ago tonight, the, we had the scouts here, and, and there, there is some interest, and I've even heard from other folks in the community who would be anxious to help and participate in ways to get the Pioneer Park site moving along. As you can see here, the documentation that I've passed out to you is, it was prepared by the Parks and Rec Department. It lists the, the highest priorities for them in terms of what park facilities that they would like to get completed. And as you can see, the Pioneer Park site is listed third on the list. We need to make sure, it's, it's, it's in parentheses there with regard to the park, the Pioneer Park site, but it, we need to make sure that, that citizens understand. Anyone who may, who may be frustrated that the, you know, it may be still three to five years before that Pioneer Park really gets heavily underway in terms of development. You know, they, they may be frustrated that the city isn't really spending any money on it, and it's kind of just sitting there. We need to make sure we educate them to realize that over the course of the last four to five years, the city has already expended three-quarters of a million dollars just to acquire the property. And so, the city has been expending significant monies on the park. It hasn't been to, you know, build anything fun to play on, but it's actually been in the acquisition of the, of the property. Anyway, and you can see the rest of their prioritized capital expenditures there for parks. I appreciate Vance so much in putting together, or whoever he had put together, if he didn't do it himself. But, he presented here, if you turn again in the packet that I've handed out, he talks about electable options. The sign at Pioneer Park indicates that the park is intended to be a lighted park. That's to give everyone down there a heads up that it's for the Pioneer Park. But, as you can see, there is then a menu of, say, Gailey Park, or some other park that, that goes dark at night, where there's not really much of, there may be evening activities at this park, and there would be lights on during that, just so that, and you can see here on this menu of estimated costs, that there is a lighted option versus a non-lighted option, you know, in there as well, which you can see that the costs escalate, the more options you, you would like. But as you can see, there's a lot of different things. There's even pickleball courts on there, as we've heard about tonight. But there's also things like frisbee golf and other typical kinds of things, like a parking lot, public utilities that would need to be put in, splash pads, sports courts, things like that. So, anyway, there, there are quite a number of options to be presented there, that could be, any number of them could go into Pioneer Park, but it really boils down to what, what do we want to go on Pioneer Park? And to the point of the committee that was put together for Gailey Park, that is the model that we would like to employ. I think right now, the Parks and Rec staff is, is projecting probably three to five years before we get in earnest really going after Pioneer Park development. But what we can do in the interim, and in the immediate future, is to try to put together a committee of interested folks, many of whom were here two weeks ago, and others who have reached out, to try to compile and go through the similar kind of process that went through, that they went through for just the Gailey Park playground, to try to get some community input for what should go into that park, recognizing that there are, there's, there's diminishing need, if I can put this, say this correctly, Vance, or correct me if I'm wrong, there's a diminishing need for some of the prepared fields for, for, you know, specific soccer fields and things like that. That enrollment is, has peaked somewhat, and is not going up, our, our enrollment and registration for our soccer programs, let's say, and those kinds of things, has not grown, is not growing currently as it was a few years ago. Is that correct? So, it's not necessarily that this park should be another Angel Street soccer complex. Okay?
Could I, could I just say, I mean, this is absolutely incredible. This preparation from Parks and Rec to put in very detailed layman's terms what it costs, what it takes, what the goals are. I mean, anyone could look at this and say, certainly, it's, it's, well, it's very clear to me that even our questions that we put, that we, that we gave you last week, you were very, very prepared for. So, to see something like this and understand the priorities, understand the estimated costs, is just, is just incredibly impressive to me. So, I just, I tip my hat to you guys. It's providing this kind of information to the lay legislative body, not to speak for all of us, but I think that oftentimes we just don't understand it. This is-
Especially this guy.
Very, 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 very helpful and very impressive.
You mean Chris didn't write it? I thought it was Chris's doc. You even got my skate park in there, dude. I mean, and the, I didn't, the BMX track's probably in here.
Amazing. The BMX track didn't make it, I don't think, but the, the skate park did.
It'll be cheap. I know a couple guys who have tractors. Temporary use, temporary use.
Anyway, so, yeah, that's for your information, and it's also for us to continue the discussion as we, as we move forward. The mayor's already mentioned budgetary priorities that, that come up. And I think I, just, speaking personally, having talked with the Parks and Rec Department a few times, you know, the, the first couple of priorities that are on there, I think, one of the, one of the struggles, I think, it must be for, from a departmental perspective, is they, they start, you know, for example, Barnes Park, that was first started in 1985? 1985, and it's still not complete, in terms of the stuff they'd like to put in there, as far as having additional restrooms and storage, and lighting, and some sidewalks there. And you can see some of the projected costs for those. And respectfully, I, I agree with the Parks and Rec Department, their suggestion that we'd, we'd like to get some of that stuff finished, so that we can consider that park completed, before we turn attention away again. As attention's been diverted a number of times over the last several decades, since 1985. Barnes Park is beautiful, but it is still incomplete. Heritage Park is amazing now. It's also still incomplete. We'd like to get those kind of finished up, and then we can turn the attention to some other things. That's not to say that we can't do some things already to try to, you know, get community involvement in the development of that park, and in the planning stage of that. Anyway, any, anything else you'd like to add, Vance?
No, great. Thank you.
Thank you for the, the effort you put into that. That's incredibly helpful. Couple of other sheets on that packet are, you know, just for your information, you know, as far as different things that are projected to be added to our capital facilities plan, things that are included in the impact fees. So, just, just so that we're all aware, whenever anybody comes in to get a building permit, let's say, for a new home or a new business, they pay an impact fee, a Parks and Rec impact fee on that. And those fees are dedicated to specifically use, you know, for, for the Parks and Rec Department. And so, the, the items that were considered in that are also on a sheet here in, in the capital facilities plan, that were, that were built into that impact fee. So, anyway.
Impressive.
That's, that's what I've got to share, as far as the Parks Department. I, I do also want to mention, I, I had a great meeting with the, the director at USU Botanical Center. It was a great opportunity to sit down and tour their facilities. You're probably all aware that, if you've driven past it anyway, any construction going on there, they're, they're laying a water line and doing some other things in there that is actually helpful to us as well, to the community at large, and also to them. But they are really planning some future improvements in there, and some things that I think it will really make, if it isn't already, which it somewhat is in certain seasons, the Botanical Center a destination for a number of places, a number of people from not just Utah, but from other states. Certainly a regional destination for them to come and learn about different, they even have a goal to, to have the Botanical Center actually recognized as Utah's real botanical arboretum, actually, not, not the state arboretum that's up at, I think it's at the University of Utah or something right now. Anyway, they, the one thing that they, and I, I'm enlisting, you know, anyone with an earshot here, they, they do, they would like, because with all the construction that they've been doing, the neighboring neighborhoods are, have, have approached them and said, "What are you doing? How could you sell out? Are you subdividing, you know? Are you putting this water line in?" And they're like, "No, no, 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 we're, we're not doing that." They, they talked to me about an opportunity to maybe get a small committee together of folks from Palos Verdes, from, is it the Seasons? That's sort of there to the northwest. And then I can't, I don't know the, the name of the subdivision that's immediately to the north of the Botanical Center there. But, you know, a, a committee of individuals from there, so that they can meet with periodically, maybe a couple of times a year, to try to help disseminate what their plans are and what their future ideas are. So, I'm requesting your input, if you know individuals in those particular subdivisions, requesting input from the public as well, from staff, that we can give them a few names and some contact information, that they could reach out and put together a, a committee of people, that they can try to help their communication efforts with their immediate neighbors in Kaseville. So.
Very good.
All right.
Any other council member report?
Promise I'm done.
Hearing none, we'll move to the next on our agenda, which is approved in all of the minutes. I have one set of minutes dated January 21st, 2016. If you've had a chance to review, I'd welcome a motion for their approval.
I've had a chance to read through them, and I make a motion to approve the minutes, January 21st, 2016, as written.
Second?
I think the motion by Councilmember Lee, and a second by Councilmember Garn for approval of the minutes is outlined. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Voting is unanimous. Next item on our agenda is approval of claims. You have one set of claims dated February 3rd, 2016, at 12:43 PM. If you've had a chance to review, it'd welcome a motion for their approval.
I've had a chance to review them, and I'll make a motion to accept the claims.
I'll, I'll second that. Seems to be a much smaller set of claims than we had the last couple of times.
I think the motion by Councilmember Garn, and a second by Councilmember Snell for approval of the claims is outlined. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Voting is unanimous. Next on our agenda is review of calendar. You have before you a three-month calendar. The real exciting thing coming up is our work session on February 20th. Aside from that, I have you look forward to the Easter egg hunt on March 26th at 9:00 AM. And, and then on April 6th, 7th, and 8th is the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. We've assumed that most of you will plan to attend, but as we get closer, we'll-
That's the one in St. George, right?
It is.
Mm-hmm.
Any other items for the calendar?
It might be useful to put on that calendar, to just indicate on that, that civic education meeting with the Youth City Council, that's on, it's more for your information, but you're more than welcome to attend with, you know, if you'd like to come to that as well. But that's on March 11th, and that's at the State Capitol Building. Not the Capitol Building, but the office building.
The office building, behind the Capitol, on the first floor in the auditorium.
Immediately north of the, of the Capitol Building itself.
Where we met for the-
Yes, same place.
For the mock debate. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a closed meeting to discuss personnel. I would welcome a motion after a brief break, because something tells me Dean doesn't have the recorder down exactly. He'll have to make some changes, and I need a brief break. So, a motion to move into executive session after a brief recess.
Mayor, I'll, I'll move that we go into a closed meeting after we have a brief recess.
Second?
I think a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion by Councilmember Snell, and a second by Councilmember Adams for the record. All in, voting is unanimous. Thank you.